Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for October 3rd, 2023. Misty, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quinno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please rise and do the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full house here tonight, including quite a few firefighters based on their apparel. So if the council has no objection, I would ask for unanimous consent to move item 8A to be our next item. That is Resolution 23-66, so recognition of Marc Yandre. Is there any objection? All in favor? Okay, thank you. We have unanimous consent. So Misty, can you please read that title?
Just one moment. I've got to grab it.
Oh, sorry.
Resolution 23-66, an appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills Fire Department from Marc Yandre.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion and a second, and then we'll have any staff comments, and then I'll read the resolution out loud. So is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 23-66, an appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills Fire Department from Marc Yandre.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Waters. Is there any comment from Mr. Daley or Chief Russ?
Chief Russ, would you like to say anything? Otherwise, I can take it from here.
If you don't mind, I do have a few words.
Fantastic. Thank you.
This is coming from Chief Ron Wagner down in Jefferson. So it states, "44 years of dedicated selfless service to the citizens of the City of Lake Mills and the surrounding communities within the Jefferson County and neighboring counties. This is an amazing lifetime achievement award, actually, for Marc. I've known Marc now for 32 years, working side by side with him, not only at fire scenes, but also during county chiefs' meetings, association activities, and MABUS events. Marc is and has been well-respected by his peers, again, on the fire ground and during administrative engagements. When Marc arrives on scene, he provides that level of confident reassurance to his colleagues. He is a worker. He sees the big picture. His fire acumen helps to ensure a safe and efficient incident management process. Personally, once Marc arrives on scene, I get the reassurance that we are okay. We are good. We have another reliable and competent person who has arrived, and I don't have to worry of the area that he has been assigned to or assigned to manage. I cannot emphasize enough the loss for Jefferson County and the City of Lake Mills with Marc's retirement. Marc exemplifies service above self. Forty-four years of giving his time, talents, and certainly many hours of his sleep, not for the pay, not for public recognition or reward, but for his own personal internal satisfaction, that he has done something to help someone else. Why? Why is what one might answer. Why would somebody give up this time? No one can answer that because it is about the individual and the character, something that not everyone has inside them. I know Marc lives by the call of service set forth by President John F. Kennedy, and asks not what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country. Replace the word "country" with "local community," and that is what Marc lived to and Marc has lived this call to service for. Thank you, Marc. I personally have thoroughly enjoyed working alongside you in a brotherhood not everyone can understand. Your legacy will live on in the hearts and minds of those who have served with you as long as your memory is still here within this county. Chief Wagner.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to say some words personally for myself. Prior to accepting the job here at Lake Mills, I had the opportunity to know Marc Yandre and his brother Todd. I worked over in Edgerton, which we did cover part of the Jefferson County area, so I did attend meetings and got to know Marc and got to work on scenes with Marc. I didn't get to work heavily with Marc, but I can look back and look at the words that Chief Wagner had said, and yes, that is true. That was an area that was covered. Guaranteed, you did not have to worry about that area any longer. So when the position at Lake Mills came and Marc was still here, he was kind of the familiar face that I had grown accustomed to seeing and has helped with the transition from prior to me being here to giving me opportunities to learn from him and how this department works and functions. So he has made a great effort in this transition to where we are today. Even though it's only been a short time, I know I begged him to stay on an extra month, which he did, because that is Marc's selflessness that he has done. So Marc, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Drake, is there anything that you wanted to add?
All I would add is to express my immense gratitude to Marc Yandre for his leadership in the department following the passing of Chief Todd Yandre and his selfless delay of his retirement multiple times to provide a steady hand at the department when it was definitely needed and staying on board with us as we sought our next fire chief and then delaying his retirement even further to help get that fire chief situated and hit the ground running. So it's a loss, but I wish him nothing but the best for the amount of the greater free time he's about to enjoy without needing to answer calls in the middle of the night or respond when that whistle goes off. So just thank you, Marc.
Thank you. I'd like to read the resolution, and then I will vote on the resolution, and then I'll offer other council members an opportunity to say something. I'll probably get a little emotional, so I'm not going to look at Marc. This is Resolution 23-66, an appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills Fire Department from Marc Yandre. Whereas Marc Yandre joined the department as a firefighter on October 1st, 1979, and whereas in 1990 Marc Yandre was promoted to the rank of captain, and whereas in 1998 Marc Yandre was promoted to the rank of assistant chief, where he served until 2023, and whereas in 2023, following the tragic passing of Fire Chief Todd Yandre, Marc Yandre assumed command of the fire department as acting chief until a replacement had been appointed. And whereas Marc Yandre has served the Lake Mills Volunteer Fire Department for a distinguished 44 years. And whereas Marc Yandre's commitment to the fire department and its members has had an immeasurable impact on the organization. Whereas Marc Yandre's selfless commitment to the protection of the community's residents, visitors, and property will be sorely missed. And whereas Marc Yandre has served the Lake Mills community with honor and integrity. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career of Marc Yandre and extends best wishes for an enjoyable and fulfilling retirement from the Lake Mills Fire Department. Misty, can we have a roll call vote on this resolution, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Is there any council member that would like to share their personal thoughts? Thank you, everyone. Is there any council member that would like to share some personal words? Mr. Waters?
I'll start. I know it's an emotional night. I did get a chance to talk to Marc before the meeting, and I could see the emotion. I don't look at it as a passing, moving on. I look at it as appreciation for the past 44 years. It's been awesome what you've done for the community. I'd like to see the first time that whistle goes off and you're trying to decide, do I react? It'll be interesting. But you've served the community in so many different ways, and I know the fire department's going to miss you. But thank you for all your service and your continued service within the city. Thank you, Marc.
Marc, it is with great, great emphasis that I want to thank you for everything that you have done, for the amount of time that you have, which I'm not going to tell you is older than me. That shouldn't be. That's a lot. But it's still, it's an amazing accomplishment to put forth so much of yourself and your time and your efforts to serve the community in which you live. And it's really great to have you as a familiar face. So even though you may not be responding to fire calls, just seeing you around the community, it gives a sense of safety and comfort. So thank you for everything that you've done and will continue to do.
Mrs. Bishop?
Mr. Yandre, there are no real words or statements that can appropriately reflect the heart and soul that you've put into your last 44 years in service to our community. So thank you. I hope you have a really awesome retirement.
Marc, thank you for all your years of service. Embrace this downtime. I know it's going to be a challenge not running to the alarm when it goes off, the siren, but just embrace the downtime. Have some fun. Enjoy it. You've earned it. Thank you.
Thank you again, Marc, for your 44 years of service to this community in a profession. As Chief Wagner said, not a lot of people can understand what really goes into it, what drives you, what it entails. But my deepest thanks for your many years of service and best wishes in your retirement. And with that, I will offer you the opportunity to come to the podium and say something if you'd like. There might be some tissue up there. I'm not sure.
Where do I start? First of all, I want to thank all the men and women of the fire department that came over here. Without them, this wouldn't be here for myself. They make things real easy. We're a paid-on-call department, but when these guys go, they're professionals. They get off the rig, they have their tools in hand, and they go to work. It doesn't matter if we're at the Patrick Cudahy Fire, the Echo Lake Fire, the explosion in some prairie. Every one of these men and ladies are professionals of what they do. It's never been about me and never will be about me. It's not about them. They'll say the same thing. They perform a service that this town or city desperately needs. There's been a lot of changes since I started in '79, when we basically wore raincoats, pull-up boots, and rubber gloves, and four air packs in the whole department. Forty-four years later, everybody has their own mask. We have more than enough air packs that everybody can wear them. The equipment we have is state-of-the-art, and it's a very valuable resource for the city. And I really appreciate everything that these people have done over the years. It's getting to be, let's see here now. There's only Mike Lees, Duke Boudick, Rick Hines are the only chief officers still alive from when I started. So it's going to be hard walking away, but it's time. It's time. So thank you very much.
Thank you again, Marc. Thank you again, and thanks to all the firefighters who were here to be able to join us this evening and had a chance to shake Marc's hand beforehand. So appreciate everyone being here. Okay, so we'll go back to our regular agenda now. We're on item number four, which is council member board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes. We have City Council, Housing Authority, Parks Board, Police and Fire Commission, Library Board, and Plan Commission, a series of meetings that are listed here. Are there any questions or comments on any of these minutes? Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, Ms. Curler. I would move to strike the Parks Board minutes from 8/16 because those were not approved at the last meeting and are currently under revision for approval at the next meeting.
Okay. I don't know if we need a vote on that or if we can just remove that from the list of minutes being accepted tonight.
With no objection, you can simply remove them from the list.
Okay. Is there any objection to removing them? Okay, so we'll remove the Parks Board minutes from August 16th from the list and hope to see those at a future meeting. Any other questions or comments on the other minutes listed? Okay, if not, we will accept all of those, the listed minutes, with the exception of the Parks Board from August 16th into our public record. Next item is correspondence. Mr. Fields, I'll start with you.
Pretty quiet this last week. I just attended the Summer Ridge apartment grand opening. That was the only event, so that's all I had the last two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Bishop?
Okay, I had a correspondence about the future and current land use maps. I had a correspondence about Sandy Beach and one of the line item numbers in the budget and a correspondence about the mill pond and the relevant tax assessments for those property owners.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
Yeah, I have one correspondence on pickleball and a couple follow-up correspondence on the tree resolution.
Okay, Ms. Quinno?
I have nothing that has not been said. Nothing new.
Okay. I'll add a couple items and a couple things I think we all received from Drake that I think are important to note. The Holiday Inn Express project is on indefinite hold, so that project, it sounds like, will not be moving forward anytime soon. And also Drake provided us some follow-up on using the state-approved contract for purchasing that we had discussed at a prior meeting. I got some correspondence from a new reporter for the Lake Mills leader, who is Anthony McCully. I introduced himself and had some questions about the veterans mural. Correspondence, I think that Mrs. Bishop also received on the mill pond plan and timeline and property tax assessments. A few conversations about Rock Lake water levels and then a couple of comments about the Sandy Beach Restaurant, RFP, and the Sandy Beach redevelopment. Okay. Okay, the next item is questions and public comment. So this is the time where the public is encouraged to address the council regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The State's Open Meetings Law discourages action by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign and sheet provided at the podium. For those attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature so that we are aware that you'd like to speak.
Good evening. I'm Carol Burrows, 169 West Lake Park Place. As I was reviewing the City Council meeting agenda for tonight, I went through the comprehensive plan, and under the heading of "Public Schools and Civic Facilities and Organizations", which is on pages 511 and continues on to 512, it said, "Members of the community have expressed that providing a community center for all ages should be a priority." I was glad to see that in there. "The city should evaluate funding models for supporting community centers like the Rock Lake Activity Center." And then it goes on to the second paragraph and says that "The City Council should identify a liaison or representative for civic facilities and organizations to facilitate coordination and community action on standing..." Pardon me. Can't see it when it's not that big. "...and communication on planning issues." So it would be the School District, Rock Lake Activity Center, Joint Rock Lake Committee, Lake Mills Astalon Historical Society, and Legendary Lake Mills. I think what that indicates is that the time has come for us to seriously consider a multi-age community center. We are very thankful to have a senior center, absolutely. I was digging through some of my things that I had from trying to start the Senior Center Club 55 Senior Center, and I found an agenda from January 12th of 2017. I mean, I have stacks of things, and it's, you know, reviewing modified drawings prepared by Brendan Kress of Strand Associates. That was done in 2017 or '16. And reviewing the site and the floor plans. Discuss the cost. Determine probable cost of current proposal. I have been at enough council meetings and followed city activities long enough to know that there's not enough money to go around. I think we all get that. We need certain things to help the whole community. But I also think that if we look hard enough or work more diligently, maybe as a community, community members, we will come up with a plan to get a facility that can accommodate a multi-age, which is exactly what we had said. We were looking for a multi-age facility, and it was an ad hoc committee that we had. Also, I would like to, one of the things during research for several of us was found from the Daily Dodge of March 11th of 2022, and it was a grant that the City of Wapahon had gotten from grant funds to construct a new senior center. Governor Tony Evers recently announced nearly $213 million in neighborhood investment fund grants to address the needs of communities throughout long-term economic recovery projects. Of course, that was right after the pandemic. Wapahon is in line for nearly $5 million to build a senior center on city-owned land. A new building was recommended following a facility audit that examined possible solutions to aging structures. The current senior center is in need of multiple repairs, ADA updates, and additional space to accommodate growing attendance and programming. That so perfectly describes what is happening right here in our community. We are in a facility that is aging and needs lots of things. We're doing our best, but we are only able to accommodate so many people. We have one room that we rent from Rock Lake Activity Center. Currently, we are under the umbrella of the School District, so it's just parceled out in many different spots. And I think we need to come together and find something that will help and accommodate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Any questions for Ms. Burrows? Mr. Waters? Oh, he'll call her on the phone. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Joe Kiefer, 926 Plainview Terrace, Lake Mills. Hello, City Council members. I'm honored to stand before you tonight to provide you an update on a project that holds significance in our community, the Veterans' Mural. I'll give you a brief history of the mural, where it stands now, and exciting steps that lie ahead. From 2014 to 2016, I created a mural honoring local veterans on the north side of the Shopko Pharmacy Building, located at 203 North Main Street. This mural showcased 45 life-size portraits of local veterans, along with 64 painted stars adorned with plaques bearing the names, ranks, branches of military, and years of service of these honored veterans. However, in 2018, Tyranina Brewery purchased the building, but unfortunately, they did not have the same vision for the mural in their reconstruction plans. The mural was placed in storage, leaving an empty space on the canvas of our community. But today, I bring you a heartwarming update. This summer, the Historic Society voted to accept ownership of the mural. My partnership with them has led to a new home for the mural. The Historic Society president, Robin Unce, has been a great help through this process. The mural will be installed in not just one, but three locations downtown, symbolizing the enduring understanding and appreciation we hold for our veterans. The mural will proudly be displayed at Jensen's Plumbing and Heating, Denny's Hair Salon, and the American Legion Post 67. We are so grateful for the owners of these buildings for stepping up and honoring our veterans. Just a few days ago, on September 26th, the Lake Mills Planning Commission approved the Lake Mills Veterans' Mural as a designated public work of art and gave their nod for its reinstallation in Veterans' Alley. For the next steps, we are working diligently with a local contractor, Noah Cop, through the reinstallation process. We are also working to add a half-panel for a dedication plaque, and we'll be having a professional photographer, Joanna Niven, photograph the panels for documentation and potential purchase of photographs of the veterans by loved ones. To cover the costs involved, we are grateful for Kent Kouser, who originally owned Shopko Pharmacy, and the Bank of Lake Mills for donations to provide the necessary funds for the reinstallation. In closing, the Veterans' Mural stands as a testament to the unwavering dedication of our servicemen and women. It gives me great joy as an artist and community member that the mural finds its home once again, proudly representing our gratitude for our veterans. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Kiefer?
Thank you, Jill, very much for being here, and I appreciate you sharing this. We got an opportunity at the Plan Commission last week to see pictures of where these pieces of the mural are likely to be placed. And I think someone said that you could see all three parts of the mural from one place based on where they're going to be installed, so that's really special. And having part of it on the Legion Building is always also going to be really special.
Absolutely. Yeah. So the timeline for this is hopefully in October. For sure, my hope is by Veterans' Day to have it completed and to honor our veterans.
Thank you very much. A great example of partnership between the different businesses and organizations.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment tonight?
Thank you, Anita Martin. We live at 261 Pinnacle Drive in Lake Mills. We have another recycling event coming up, Clean Sweep Recycling for Electronics as well as appliances, on Saturday, October 21st, from 8:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m., and this time it is at the Jefferson County Fairgrounds in Jefferson. The line will be actually cut off at 10:30. This is a first-come, first-served type of event. No appointments are required. And I would just like to share some of the items that can be recycled at no charge. Computer towers, laptops, tablets, cords and wires, power supplies, cell phones, audio equipment, MP3 players, routers, modems, desktop printers, Christmas or other holiday lights, video gaming devices, cable and satellite boxes, et cetera. There are some charges for a few items, like large refrigerators or freezers are $35. Laptop, I'm sorry, mini refrigerators are $20. Window air conditioning units are $20. Dehumidifiers, $20. Microwaves and larger copy machines are $15. And then for recycling TVs, it depends upon the screen size. Anything ranging from 29 inches for $20 up to a 60-inch screen for $60. We are not taking any tires this time. No chemicals or household chemicals this time. Nothing like that. nothing like that, and no batteries or bulbs. We are asking people to remove batteries and bulbs before they bring their items for recycling. So if you, I think I covered just about everything. If anyone has any questions, nine-two-zero-six-seven-four-seven-four-three-zero would be the number. Thank you.
What was the date again?
It's Saturday, October twenty-first, eight AM until eleven, with the line being cut off at ten-thirty. We decided to do that because it just makes the flow of things better and people have a better idea of what to expect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak?
I'm Terry O'Connor from Lake Mills, two thirty-five South Ferry Drive. I've lived on Rock Lake for over fifty-some years. I heard that there's going to be a presentation tonight on the operation of the dam, and I really have an interest in that since I really don't have a good handle on that. And the reason that I signed up, I wanted to ask if the council, if it would be appropriate after that presentation on the dam, that I could ask a few questions if I have a few questions. So that's why I signed up, and it's up to the council. I won't feel bad if you say no.
Thank you. That would not be our typical protocol, but we'll see how it goes with the, with the staff presentation. Maybe they'll answer all your questions, who knows? Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Anyone else in the room who'd like to make public comment tonight? And is there anyone online who would like to address the council? Okay, if there's no one else who'd like to speak, we'll close the questions and public comment. Thank you, everyone. Next is Agenda Item Number Seven, City Manager's Report, and we have a couple of financial documents.
Just a reminder that our first budget work session is currently scheduled for Thursday at five-thirty. We have, we did receive some updated numbers, so there will be some small adjustments to the budget from what you've seen previously that we can discuss on Thursday. But that has been, finalizing the budget has been our priority prior to that, and so I look forward to going through it with the council on Thursday.
Sounds great. Any questions or comments on the reports that we've received? Mr. Waters?
On the Sandy Beach RFP, what timeframe are we looking at at presentation to council?
The next meeting, October seventeenth. We plan to have them present to city council. We'll have a, we have a meeting, I'll have a meeting with them prior just to make sure I fully understand it as well, and then we can discuss next steps after their presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for city manager? Okay, we'll move on to council business. We've already taken item A. So our next item, Letter B, is a presentation on zoning and subdivision ordinance assessment report from Heartland Housing Initiative. Drake, do you want to kick this off?
Sure. Eric Fowle is online. He'll be running us through a presentation. He's with Cedar Corp., who was the consultant that the Heartland Housing Initiative utilized for a review of the city's zoning, zoning and subdivision ordinances to find areas which may be able to be adjusted in order to allow for more affordable development. So with your permission, I would just turn it over to him and ask him to give his presentation.
Sure.
Well, good evening. Thank you, council president, council members, for offering an opportunity and some time to share the report with you. I trust you can all hear me. I'm going to just start a quick presentation, and I'll be fairly brief, but leave plenty of time for questions. So just quickly, Cedar Corporation was selected for the Heartland Housing Initiative based, to some degree, on relationships we've had past work that we've done in the affordable housing arena. We cover the state, provide full municipal engineering, planning services, and the like. Drake had mentioned that this service was offered as part of the Heartland Housing Initiative, which was a collaborative effort amongst Jefferson and Dodge Counties, a few other partners, including Thrive and Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation. They were receipt of a WEDC capacity building grant to cost-share this project, and Lake Mills was one of seven communities that we had worked with on a variety of different projects and different approaches to essentially see what can be done to take sort of the talk of affordable housing and opportunities that exist and really move them forward to kind of see what it takes to get construction on the ground or more construction. I do want to thank not only Drake and Troy on your staff's end for the time that they committed to this project and reviewing the results of it, but also my team members, Josh Miller from Cedar Corporation, and Dave Porterfield from Moving Out, who was a subconsultant on many of the projects we worked on. So our objectives with this project seem pretty simple upfront, but it gets very complex and tedious when you look at the details, but essentially looking at your existing zoning and subdivision ordinance for potential changes that might improve the affordability of housing, providing some context and a setting for major ordinance modifications. It's hard to just suggest changes without at least talking a little bit about why they might be needed or what opportunities they could provide, and also to put things in a format where detailed language is provided so that the city at some point can consider one or more of those pieces through your formal ordinance amendment process and procedures.
Eric, if I could just interrupt you a moment, we're not seeing any presentation, so are you, are you, do you have slides that you want to share with us?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
We're seeing you speak, but we're not seeing the slides, so I just wanted to check.
It's not sharing the screen. Thank you for jumping in there. Can everybody see that now?
Yes, yes, now we can, thank you.
All right. You didn't miss anything, except just some bullet points and pretty pictures. But the approach we took was actually suggested and based a little bit on League of Wisconsin Municipalities Report that was published about a year or so ago, a user's guide to affordable neighborhood, Wisconsin neighborhood affordability. And a lot of it really does draw on making sure a community has an understanding of its existing housing, the character of that housing, some of the design elements, and to some degree, asking the question, you know, can we build the same thing today that's affordable now in terms of existing housing? And so through an evaluation of these ordinances, one of the things that we wanted to really focus on was what can be done to potentially reduce the construction costs and make housing more affordable. Obviously, the city can't control a lot of factors that are involved in creating affordable housing. You have no control on high interest rates, supply chains, material costs, labor shortages, and all of those types of things. But communities do kind of hold the cards with how they direct the physical nature of development and what opportunities can be provided through the regulations that exist. So just really quick visuals, this isn't in the report, but hopefully it makes you think a little about what really makes housing affordable on the ground. A lot of different subcomponents of the house itself, the house size, whether it's basement or slab construction, the method of construction, or even the roof style. A four-corner design is going to be the most efficient. I'm sure you've all seen houses with very complicated roof styles, and that really adds to the cost. Do you require a garage? Can you just have a carport? Materials, renewables, and all those kinds of things all add up into the cost of the house. Obviously, the lot, the property that it sits on, has a number of factors and components, including its location, its size, the setbacks, minimum or maximum footprints that may be allowed depending on the zoning and what other restrictions. Does it offer opportunities to have a secondary unit so that the owner of that house can have a bit more income and make his unit more affordable? Obviously, infrastructure comes into play as well, road, curb, gutter, sewer, water, everything that's in front of the house, under the street, costs money for the developer in terms of at least the initial installation as well as subsequent replacement and maintenance. We've had some older figures here. We haven't updated these for a while, but as of two thousand eighteen, you're looking at at least about five hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot for a residential lot, and that's only since increased, I'm sure. And then, of course, there's intangibles, you know, the process for developing or building, rezonings, building permits, the fees, the process for plating, impact fees, dedications, the timeframes, time is money, obviously. So all of those things need to be considered and thought about as well. So let me just briefly highlight some of the things in the report specific to the zoning ordinance. I'll do the same with the subdivision ordinance and then summarize and be available for questions. To really cut to the chase, the major findings. Overall, the zoning ordinance has some good things in it, but like any ordinance, it's dated. It didn't contemplate the issues that we are seeing, you know, feeling today and seeing today, and many communities are in the same position. One of the things we noticed right away is the need to enhance and update definitions, including those referring to various types of what we typically call accessory dwelling units or accessory dwellings. Also modifying the language for permitting those ADUs and their associated standards and trying to really simplify things in terms of your ordinance, and I'll talk a little more about that. Relaxation of residential district dimensional standards. We're not necessarily saying you should throw out single-family zoning, as some communities have, which is always an option, but looking at the standards in single-family and what can be done to reduce potentially some of those costs. And also the creation of what we call a new missing middle residential district that allows generally for three-to-six-unit housing types and styles and things that probably really aren't allowed on the ground with your current ordinance. I did take a peek at your comprehensive plan that you're addressing later in the meeting and was very pleased to see that missing middle was mentioned in there a number of times as a potential solution. So with the ADU recommendations, we found that your ordinance was a bit confusing, that it kind of allowed them, but in only certain instances, and there were no less than four different terms or definitions for what these are. And so we're really suggesting a single definition, which I've got captured above, and the understanding that accessory dwelling units can take many different forms and could serve many different purposes depending on how they're attached to the garage or if they're, to the home, or if they're separated and things of that nature. One of the recommendations we have is that you also consider allowing ADUs within your basic residential districts or single-family districts as a permitted use, as an accessory unit, and not going the route of requiring public hearings. Having it as a by-right use is going to make it less expensive ultimately because you're eliminating some of the process, and to be honest with you, ADUs typically do not cause a whole lot of trouble or concern in a neighborhood in terms of traffic, noise, those types of things. One of the things that many communities have done to try and ensure that is that the owner of the property must be occupying either the principal home or the ADU so that you have the owner on site. We also suggest looking at the creation of a new zoning district, a missing middle district, just telling it like it is in terms of its title, and looking at that accommodating a range of housing densities and a variety of housing types which really aren't available typically with new development. Most communities have single-family zoning for single-family homes, duplex zoning for duplex, and then they jump to apartments or multifamily, which in many cases usually start at eight units and go up from there. But this whole concept of missing middle and creating the opportunity for triplexes, fourplexes, sixplexes, you know, small apartments, trying not to put all of the apartment uses in one area like you would in industrial park, but rather spreading those around at a smaller scale would certainly create more of a livable and walkable neighborhood. This would be relatively easy to do in terms of inserting a new district, looking at the permitted and conditional uses within that district and having it aligned to some degree with some of the other residential districts. My guess is most of these kinds of developments would be new on the periphery, but could be opportunities for some pocket neighborhoods or cottage-style developments to be considered within some interior parks of the community if there's land available or redevelopment opportunities. We also suggest relaxation of your residential dimensional standards within the R1 districts. In a nutshell, giving the opportunity to have something other than a large house on a large lot, reducing the lot sizes. We've worked with some communities that have been going down to as small as five thousand square feet, reducing the lot widths. You'd be amazed how many home designs, smaller home designs, can fit on a forty-foot-wide lot. We're suggesting perhaps looking at fifty feet in your case. Reducing the front setbacks, the utilities from the main lines to the service lines coming to the house all cost money, and what's even more beneficial is having those front setbacks reduced, bring the building closer to the street, make for a more walkable and pedestrian-oriented neighborhood. And also increasing lot coverage allowances. There's some information in the report that we looked at some of the lot coverage requirements and your back lot, backyard lot coverage requirements, and they're a little confusing and ultimately perhaps have a detrimental effect on building an ADU within some of the properties. There's a variety of other recommendations under the zoning part of this. There's other definitions that we took a look at and considered, some additions, deletions. We looked at driveways and had some suggestions regarding that. Off-street parking, mainly a concern with more commercial and perhaps even multifamily development. Many communities out there are now reducing, if not eliminating, parking requirements for commercial and industrial uses. Some have trimmed them down for multifamily. You might want to consider doing that. And there may be instances where you have mixed use with retail on the first floor and apartments above, and you'd really need to look and consider the parking amounts that are necessary for those uses. Number of minor fixes that we caught, a few things that weren't even necessarily affordable housing-related, but made the suggestions regardless, such as conditional use provisions. In the subdivision ordinance, a little less complex, and obviously, a lot of this follows the thought of looking at construction and construction requirements for a new subdivision. In general, there are a few findings in three areas regarding your subdivision ordinance. The dedication of land for recreation use and fee in lieu of is good, and I certainly understand there are needs to maintain and create parks and those kind of things, but I think finding a balance, maybe offering some incentives or the ability to waive if a developer offers affordable units, say, in a small apartment complex, there's a lot of different ways that can be addressed. The adequacy of public facilities and phasing provisions, there's some tweaks that could be made in there, which we think would likely not only improve the process, but ultimately could theoretically potentially reduce some of the construction costs, some of the time frames involved for review and approval. And then also the design standards. Nothing too shocking in there, and we understand the city needs to make sure it has good quality infrastructure that developers leave them, so you're not stuck holding the bag and having big costs shortly down the road, but really taking a look at things such as the right-of-way widths and pavement widths. Are you overbuilding streets for what is a lesser-used residential street? You can reduce those down to even fifty feet and still probably have sufficient room. There were references to block length in there, and reducing those to improve just walkability may also be a benefit and attractive to getting people into neighborhoods with homes such as this. We do want to state that our review did not fully consider and take the time to go through every step in the process and the cost, but we suggest you take a look at the plating, the rezoning process that you may have. Are there opportunities to incentivize and quicken that process in some way, shape, or form? Also, we would suggest a detailed review of your standard specifications and take a close look at what you're requiring for materials, grades of materials, processes, to see if there's any way that you can really obtain a good balance for achieving affordable housing goals as well as your construction and asset management goals. So in summary, we do want to applaud the city because there are some good things we noticed in the ordinance, in particular, already having some of the defined terms such as affordable housing, mixed use, traditional neighborhood development, including the TND option and requirements. I think that's something that also can meld very well with that missing middle zoning district and concept. Obviously, there's some needs. It's not a perfect ordinance, and perhaps some of the things that we've suggested could be too strong. It's hard for us with little interaction to really know the exact flavor of the community, but I think we had a to really know the exact flavor of the community, but I think we had a reasonable understanding, and there may be opportunities to address some of the needs that are shown here and that I've discussed. We did try and add some additional thoughts, ideas, and additional resources. There's some additional appendices at the end with some factual information that might help clarify some of the concepts or the things that we suggested. And then lastly, it's really up to you as the city council, perhaps the plan commission first, to digest that information in the report, pick some of those things that may work, debate and discuss what might be, you know, going too far, and really kind of test some of those recommendations. Obviously, public hearings are required for zoning ordinance amendments, and I'm sure the public, given your participation tonight, would certainly let you know what their thoughts are. So with that, I thank you for your time, the opportunity again to work with Drake and Troy, and I can certainly make myself available down the road if there are additional questions or things that come up specific to that report. Otherwise, I'd also put out there should the city ever need a different perspective on some planning economic development projects. Certainly feel free to give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowle. Drake, anything you want to add before the council discusses this?
No, just to thank you to both Eric, his team, and then also to the team at Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium and Thrive Economic Development for kind of spearheading the Heartland Housing Initiative, as well as the other partners mentioned, the Greater Watertown Health Foundation. And I'm missing the last one. I apologize. For, this was a no-cost service to us for this review, and had some ideas that we may want to think about and for the council to consider. So just grateful for the opportunity to go through this process.
Wonderful. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Fowle? Mr. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Fowle. It's a great presentation, a lot of good information there. I was just looking at the term "missing middle," and you're in the industry a little bit more. Is there a more positive term that could put a more positive spin on that segment? Do you have a different term? It just doesn't seem to fit well in code, so I was wondering if you have any other thoughts?
It's kind of a unique term generated a few years back, and it's kind of stuck within the planning profession because I think first and foremost, it really matches up well with where a lot of the housing stress is in terms of those families, those households that have essentially moderate income. When you talk about medium-density development or higher-density development, oftentimes the public starts to think in the direction of, oh, that's low-income housing. And we're not talking about low-income housing at all when we're talking about affordable housing. Yes, there are needs. There are populations of low income that have additional needs beyond the average family, if you will. But the missing middle really ties in also to the economic aspect of housing affordability. Missing middle is often defined from an income perspective. Those individuals or those households making between 60 and 120% of the county's median income. And that, too, is often referred to as sort of that missing middle group because they are the ones that are struggling the most with finding housing that they don't have to spend more than 30% of their income on.
Yeah, I know what's got council's attention is wanting to attract those teachers that come to our community because if they live somewhere else, then they may change jobs to the community where they live, or nurses, or our firemen, or our policemen. We want to keep those people in our community and keep them happy. So I know that this type of housing probably falls in line with those type of professions, I would imagine.
Yes. Normally, planners are quite creative, but I guess in this instance, we haven't come up with a better term. If you figure something out, let us know. But I do think there is a little bit of marketing as far as what the issue is utilizing that term, so perhaps if nothing else, it'll stay in the public's eye a little more.
We'll put Mr. Daley on that job, so we'll keep in contact with you.
Any other questions or comments? I guess I'll just also add, number one, my thanks for the review of our ordinance and even catching a few kind of tangential things that we could tweak in our ordinance. I also had to note that missing middle is kind of a jargony term, you know, what other term could we use? I was interested in the accessory dwelling unit idea had not really occurred to me before as a way to add housing, you know, as an accessory structure where you've already got the principal home there. And I can see where that could help particularly like a within-family thing, like we always talk about the mother-in-law house or something like that, or to be a within-family rental, or, you know, good friend rental or whatever. I think we also need to look at the other areas that your report highlighted in terms of the lot sizes and setbacks and those kinds of things where those can be owner-occupied individual homes, or, like you said, threeplexes, fourplexes, that kind of thing, even in a neighborhood. We heard public comment about multi-generational. I can see these neighborhoods being, you know, that sort of multi-generational where a senior is downsized and a young family is starting out and they're, you know, living in a cottage community together. So I think this gives us a lot to chew on. Heartland Housing Initiative report. Okay, thank you again, Mr. Fowle. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Good night.
Back to our agenda. Next item is another presentation regarding the potential LD Fargo Public Library Expansion Project, and we have our library director Gerard Saylor here. Welcome, Gerard.
Not so much a presentation as an update. The one-page. Right up I did. I was trying to keep it as brief as possible, but to give some background, in 2019, we hired FEH Architects to do a building assessment survey of the building and then to do a design charrette where they spent two days designing different kinds of expansion floor plans. And the library board selected the F2 plan, which stays in the existing lot lines and has the same architectural look on the outside. It's an expansion to the north into where the parking lot is now, maybe half or a third of the way, and then going up to a second floor on the existing first-floor section and the new section. And then they finished their report and gave their presentation right after the COVID shutdown started, so we kind of put everything to the side. We had a survey done in 2021 at the end, and the results came out in January 2022. I think I presented that to the council, showing significant support within the city for expansion. And now, things have gotten a little better, and so we've been using the existing building front for the library to fund. We've rehired FEH after an RFP, and they're looking at that F2 design that they developed before, and they're coming up, well, looking at that, seeing what would need to be changed. They're going to be doing some lot surveys coming up, some boring surveys for the soil to see what expansion would cost, and they're going to come up with a final dollar amount for what an expansion would be. And so a significant part of this cost would be taken up by the library, and so we've also hired a fundraising group, the Sweeney Group out of Madison, to do a feasibility study for how much we would be able to raise for the project. And so the board elected to hire her this past week, and she's already begun that process. And so the idea here is that FEH will give her a dollar amount for what they, usually their estimates are really accurate. They do this all the time. And then we'd have most likely an achievable goal for what we'd be able to do for fundraising. And then meeting the middle is what we would hope the city would be able to do for capital funding for an expansion. And so that's where the process is at right now. I just want to keep the board, the council apprised that we are still moving forward with the project. Now, we could talk to Drake about that as well and the costs, and that's it in a nutshell. Happy to answer any questions. I could resend some of the information we had developed before, like the final report from FEH that was done in 2020. The community survey was 2022. That had a really good response. We're working on a strategic plan right now, and we were comparing Lake Mills, the LD Fargo Library to a cohort of libraries across the state, about 40-some libraries, really good mix of libraries. And it's showing that in a lot of ways, we do really well. We have more programs. We have higher children's circulation, more hours open per week. But in other areas, we're just not meeting a standard that we want to reach, and the main one of those is just building size. That's what we're limited to.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. Any questions or comments?
I think I saw something in the notes about a possible referendum, maybe a referral referendum coming up in the future.
Right. So if I have this right, any tax money spent on a building has to go up as to an advisory referendum. And so the original thought was, I want to keep pushing the project forward as this is the library board, and we had thought about being on the April ballot, but that's just not really practical. But I would like to get an advisory referendum on the ballot sometime next year. And so part of the project here is I'm keeping the council informed, and then once FEH work is done, which should be by the end of the year or in January, and then the Sweeney Group should have solid numbers in January as well, then I could take this to the council, and the council will have time to think about it, what they want to do to give us time to get onto a ballot.
So is that something we can get a timeline put together on, like these are the steps we need to take to get to this point?
Yeah. So from the library timeline has been, we have the project started, we have the fundraiser person hired, and so we're doing all that work now. It's already begun. And then be able to have numbers handy and ready for a January meeting if we can get on the agenda.
I was actually just going to suggest that.
Maybe February.
Could come back in a few months and give us another update because it sounds like there's a lot of work going on right now with these contractors, and you'll have more information on, you know, potential costs and fundraising opportunities.
Oh, yeah, we should have some pretty firm numbers right now, or not right now, at that time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just had one, and I don't know if it's for Gerard or Drake, but I don't think there's anything in our five-year capital improvement plan for, that's targeted for library expansion. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's not currently. So once the library board has kind of a final estimated project cost as well as what their, what their, what the fundraising capabilities are and what the capital campaign would provide, there will be presumably a gap there. And so we'll have to sit down with our financial advisors as well and see how that would affect the city's debt capacity and the city council's goals related to managing its debt and other projects and figure out kind of where it might slot in best. What, maybe we delay some things, maybe some things get reprioritized. That's the conversation that'll have to occur once we receive kind of the final plan from the library board.
And that gap is something I worry about. Of course, the library is always a top priority. I advocate for the library all the time. I mean, we need to be there. But I'm really waiting and hopeful that the Sweeney Group will, they're very thorough. They go and talk to dozens of people, as many people as they need to, to come up with a solid number of what's reachable, and I'm hoping that's a high number. And so then we wouldn't ask the city to be taking care of that gap in construction.
And I guess just as a reminder for our audience, and your one-page summary that we have attached to the agenda touches on this briefly, but we have a service area that goes beyond the city, but the city owns the library and property.
Correct.
So it would be the city that would be, you know, conducting any expansion or paying for expansion.
Yeah, any capital debt is all in the city.
Okay.
And we get a lot of money from the county just for annual, but we wouldn't be getting any capital, any building funds.
The county money's for operating expenses, right?
Correct. I think this year was like $190,000. I looked it up a few days ago. I don't remember exactly.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Quin.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to clarify that there is a timeline that FEH has provided, that Gerard has given to the board, that lays out exactly how it's going to, how this process is going to be laid out. It anticipates that we would be seeing initial possible referendum resolutions around the end of January.
Yeah. That was the initial plan. We talked it over at the last meeting.
Yeah.
And that was maybe a little too tight.
Okay. Well, I guess, you know, Gerard and Drake, just continue to work together and let us know when you have an update, when you, you know, we can get you on the agenda early next year to give us an update on how things are going.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, next item is a letter D, which is a discussion decision item on the Rock Lake water level options, and we have a memo from our city manager along with the presentation. And then I think also attached to the agenda are the Joint Rock Lake Committee report that we heard last time, as well as the Rock Lake Improvement Association recommendation. So those are all attached to our agenda. Drake, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. So over the last several weeks and even months, staff has been evaluating the dam, taking a look at some water level data and gate level data and kind of compiling some information on how the dam does work as informational material, kind of in parallel work with the ongoing work by Joint Rock Lake evaluating the water levels. So I'm going to turn it over to Dwayne and Eric to take the council through a quick presentation on the dam operations and how it is operated and how that has an effect on the water levels of Rock Lake.
All right. Good evening to everyone. Like Drake said, Dwayne and I are going to be doing this presentation in collaboration here. Based on all of the public correspondence that we've had this summer regarding lake levels, the finger is normally pointed at the dam operations, and I feel like part of that is due to the mutual misunderstanding as far as how the dam does operate. So what we're trying to do tonight is to educate everybody as far as its operating capacities and basically putting some understanding behind the information that it does collect. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Dwayne to introduce it, and from that, we will kind of tag team this presentation and hopefully explain some of the questions that people do have and hopefully create a mutual understanding as far as what the capabilities are.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks for the opportunity to kind of go through this presentation. Let's just start with the size of the lake. I think that's really important. As we move into some of the other slides, the surface area of the lake is 1,371 acres. That includes Marsh Lake to the south of the Drummond Trail, but not Mud Lake. That information is in the dam information on our website. It is also information that is in Jefferson County's, I believe it was a DNR report done in 2014, that has that 1,371 acres. We've confirmed it with Jefferson County GIS. It's relatively in that, in that range through GIS as well. So let's, perspective size, that's 59 million square feet. The dam size is five width, five feet width. The circumference or the shoreline is 5.8 miles. So we're talking a pretty large area in comparison to the dam itself. I'll explain a little more later as we get into some of the calculations, but I want everybody to understand what that 1,371 is. Next slide, Dave, please. These, I think most people have seen, are the DNR requirements or the water levels that are required, or the range of levels that the DNR is requiring the city to meet. One highlighted portion of that is the minimum discharge, the .13 cubic feet per second or CFS, under the dam at all times, and that is to provide water to Rock Creek, which is also where the city's wastewater treatment plant discharges to, and that flow provides the ability to discharge into that stream. So there's a So there's a, not only the discharge for the wastewater treatment plant, but also the, the plant and animal life in Rock Creek, and it maintains the flow in Rock Creek. Next slide, please, Dave. That chart, just to kind of summarize a couple of things, the range in operation in each season is three inches to four and a half inches, depending on the season. Current operation of the dam, attempts to meet that median each season, but that only gives a variation of about an hour, inch and a half or two and a half, two and a quarter inches to stay in compliance. Next slide, Dave. So let's talk a little bit more about the modes of operation and what it means. So, first, we're going to talk about that minimum flow that goes into Rock Creek. It happens in an orifice flow, and an orifice flow means it's flowing under an opening, under a plate, below the surface of the water. If we're talking about weir mode, that means the water's flowing over the top of the plate. And there's different calculations based on each one. In this minor adjustment, or this point one-three cubic feet per second, which is required by the DNR, converting that to thirty-one million seconds per year and four million cubic feet per year, and dividing by the fifty-nine million square feet of the surface area of the lake, that occurs all year round, it equates to less than one inch of lake effect in the entire year. There was some question, there has been some questions to me about whether or not the acreage of the lake is correct, or whether, as the lake level goes down, does the acreage go down? It does to some degree. However, to give an indication of what that means, it's less than an inch on this slide. In order for it to be an inch, the lake acreage would have to go down by almost two hundred acres. So, basically, the entire area of Marsh Lake would have to be eliminated in order for it to be one inch. And so again, that's one inch in the entire year. Next slide, please, oh, back one slide, sorry, Dave. There is a note on the bottom of that slide that, to give everyone kind of a way to go look at the dam and to go look at, what does point one-three look like? If you go to the dam and you go to the, the opening and you look at the six-by-four box culvert, and you look at the depth that's flowing in that pipe, if it's a half inch, you're in that range of point one-three CFS. I hope that helps, kind of give it an indication of what that means. Eric?
So as people have taken a look at the dam throughout this summer, there are a couple of things that can change that minimum discharge, and that is physical changes. So, as I know people are frequently looking at the dam, there have been a couple of times to where we were required to do what's called a flush of the dam. What happens that can actually decrease the amount of minimum discharge underneath the dam in orifice flow is the buildup of sediment, sands, debris, et cetera. During times of minimum discharge, when we're at very low lake levels, when we have a minimum amount of water flowing underneath the dam, it's much more likely that that silt and sediment does build up at the base of it. So there have been multiple circumstances throughout this summer to where there have been lower than zero point one-three cubic feet per second discharge, which is our minimum. So that can actually decrease that amount of flow underneath, to which we do have to do a very minor flush. When we do a flush, what that's basically doing is raising up that bottom, we are from the bottom, increasing the amount of discharge for a number of, just a fraction of a couple of minutes, and which lowering it back down. So currently, right now, you can see a very slow amount of discharge on the dam because of that minor discharge. We will most likely be having to operate an actual flush one more time throughout the season. Again, it's very odd that we do have to do that, but that's because we've been operating at very low capacities throughout the summer. So currently, what you see right now is actually less than zero point one-three cubic feet per seconds, but very minimal. Now, a couple of weeks ago, what you would see would be that zero point one-three cubic feet per second discharge.
So the next slide talks about another mode of operation. This is now not talking about just the minimum. And if you look at the slide, there's a little gap underneath the bottom plate. That's, that's the gap that's being used for that point one-three or that minimum flow. In, in weir mode, the dam is in a minor adjustment mode. It can't affect the lake significantly while in weir mode because of the volume of water or the flow that can actually go over the top of a five-foot wide dam. So what we're calling this is it's weir mode with a minor adjustment, meaning the gate or the dam in automatic mode is modifying the lake levels ever so slightly. It's typically used within a half inch or the half inch of the median. And again, our goal is to be at the median. As you can see from the diagram, the water's flowing over the top of both of the gates, as well as that minimum that's underneath. Next slide, Dave. So, to give an idea, when we say minor adjustment, what is a minor adjustment in weir mode? Well, if we assume one inch flow over the top of that weir all year long, that would equate to two and a half, two point four inches in one year, at one inch over the top of that weir. So, there's another note on the bottom, we've talked about adjusting the PLC, we have done that. But it's not going to significantly change the lake levels, but could shorten the gate screw maintenance life because the original design was for a one-hour adjustment. So what happens is typically, the PLC reads, it adjusts every hour based on the lake level and changes that height. What has been done has been, and we'll talk about it a little later, it's been changed from one hour to thirty minutes to minimize the amount of water that's going over the dam. But I note these two calculations because when you're in weir mode, the significant, it's not as significant as the next slide.
Just before you go on, can you remind us of what PLC stands for?
Yes, PLC stands for programmable logic computer. So what that is, is basically a digital system or a digital programmer that adjusts the actual mechanical device. So it's the programming behind, or basically the brain behind the system telling what the mechanical device to do is our PLC.
And the original setting was for that to make adjustments every hour? And you're saying it can be adjusted to every thirty minutes?
Correct, and that has been completed, based on public perception, or at least when people do go to the dam. There have been periods of high precipitation, even at periods of low lake levels, to where there has been a minimum amount of discharge over the top, and that was within that one-hour adjustment period. So it's basically the brain telling the system that it takes approximately one hour for those changes to occur. So if there was any notice discharge over the top during these minimal levels, it was within that deviation of time or that passing of time. To preserve as much of the water as possible during precipitation events, we have minimized that amount. So, we have the ability to change these PLCs, or basically reprogram them. We cannot do that internally, that is a service that is done from the actual program implementers, which is IPS, which has been referenced before. But there is quite a bit of options that we have as far as reprogramming some of these PLCs.
Thank you, Dave. So, let's talk about the, how can the dam be used to have a major adjustment? When would a major adjustment happen? It would happen in the spring thaw, spring rains, ice break. And what happens is a major adjustment, we're in orifice mode now. So the water is now flowing, the gate's going to rise, it's going to hook the other gate, it's going to rise both gates up, and it's going to create a gap underneath that's larger than the gap that is there for the point one-three. What happens in orifice mode is, is there's pressure related to the amount of water column that's above that opening. So this, it's significantly exponentially higher in flow than it is when it's just flowing over the top. So, next slide, please, Dave. So, we use that, that weir mode, I'm sorry, that orifice mode in the major adjustment. Next slide, Dave. The last gate mode operation is when we're in high gate weir mode, meaning the low flow, the minimum flow is flowing underneath. The gate is above the water level, it's in weir mode, but there's no water, the water isn't high enough to go over the top of the plate. So in a sense, it's really a no-flow mode. And Eric will probably mention it, or he will in the later slides. Throughout most of the summer, the dam has been in this operation, manually.
Yep, absolutely. So, if I can reiterate, and you can go to the next slide, Dave, there are just a few actual modes of operation. I do just want people to remember the difference between weir mode and orifice mode. Weir mode being the flow over the top, which is minor adjustment, orifice flow being a discharge underneath the bottom, above our required minimum, which is drastic amounts of water flowing, and then currently what we're in now. So during all these times, we do have all of our PLCs and the actual programmable logic of the system to run in automatic mode. Automatic mode equates to multiple fluctuations between these operating systems or operating types to make a consistent, I suppose, compliance with that median order. So the gate will adjust and change between these modes of operation to keep that lake level at as much of a constant level as possible. So, we can actually have the ability to eliminate the PLCs from this system, which is manual mode. We have been operating in manual mode multiple times throughout the past. However, this season, or the majority of this year, we have been operating in manual mode due to further investigation as far as the dam, making sure everything is within compliance and working correctly. When we are in this manual mode, we do currently have the top gate set at that minimum discharge amount to be approximately five to six inches above the actual lake level. So if anything does happen as far as increased precipitation or increased lake levels, we are going to retain a hundred percent of that with the exception of our minimum discharge underneath. The system itself in automatic mode is programmed to be very close to that top lake level. So in automatic mode, if we were to be at our minimum discharge section, that top gate would be approximately half an inch above lake level. So when we had those areas of precipitation, or when we did have rain events and that discharge was over the top, that's when it was experienced. So I do understand that this is a lot to undertake as far as what the system actually equates to physically when you look at it and its actual operating standards. And this was a lot for me to learn as well, as far as actually managing the system. So if there are any questions, please let us know. But hopefully, this is a decent description as far as the actual modes of operation. So what we're going to do now is go over a couple graphs. Perfect, Dave, thank you. What we're going to do is go over the graphs of the last five years of collected data. So we've had multiple requests to publish the gate elevation data in conjunction with our lake level data that we normally post at a monthly, a monthly standard for our lake levels on our dam management website, or the page on our website for dam management. And if we were to do that, I feel like it could be definitely misleading and misunderstanding as far as what that gate elevation actually equates to. And you can definitely see that here, looking at our first year of collected data in 2018. So what I'm going to do is go through some of the sections on this graph and kind of describe what we previously mentioned as far as the modes of operation. So what we have on our orange graph, which is that frequently fluctuating line, that is actually our gate elevation. What we have for our blue line is our lake elevation. And within that blue line, you can see the top yellow and the bottom gray line. Those are our maximum and minimum DNR required levels for the lake orders. Now, the green line that goes through the middle, that's actually what subdivides the two operating, or main operating procedures of the dam, that weir mode and orifice mode, which is previously explained. Orifice mode being a drastic amount of discharge, which equates to lowering lake levels, and then a weir mode, which is more minor adjustments within the lake level. So as we actually look at that, we can notice a couple, I suppose, frequent things that actually come up within this lake level. We can see during these times of seasonal changes, we can see that approximately about May first, that's when we go from our winter-spring levels to our summer levels. You can see a drastic increase in the lake level itself to meet our summer standards. And then you can see going into the fall, again, late September of that season, you can see a large amount of discharge with the heightening of our gate level to a lowering of our lake level to go within our fall required sections. So some of the things that we noticed, actually looking back at this data, is there is a drastic amount of gate fluctuations. And that is because the gate does switch very frequently between that weir mode and orifice mode. So the more gate fluctuations there are, means the more standardizations of our lake level. So it's reading the lake level fairly accurately and fairly quickly and adjusting to correlate with that, depending on how much it is going to be discharging. And one of the anomalies that we noticed is each time that we did actually remove the PLCs from this system, which is in sense going into manual mode, we are introducing a human element to this. In order to put this system into manual mode, an employee has to physically unlock an actual panel and switch this system, it actually looks kind of like a Franken-style-esque switch knob, to go from automatic mode to manual mode. That removes all actual adjustment points on that dam. And if we were to actually change the gate levels, it requires human involvement to do so. And that is actually pushing buttons and adjusting that gate as you are on the dam physically. And the yellow line that you notice, it's fairly faint, but what you notice is if there are periods of static gate changes, or at least no gate changes, that is for the most part, manual operation mode. And if you actually look at the early portion of twenty, or, I'm sorry, 2018, in the winter months, there was a section to where it was operated in manual mode. And if you see, what happens is that lake level actually decreased below the minimum levels and then in turn increased with our spring melt and precipitation above the maximum. What we can conclude from that is introducing that human element and reducing the amount of gate fluctuations, therefore, changes our lake level to the point where it could be more likely out of compliance. Because the gate isn't fluctuating to adjust those levels of precipitation, it's either retaining too much or discharging too much. If you could go to the next slide, Dave?
Actually, could you just go back to 2018, make sure I'm, I'm tracking this? So that, that period you were talking about in February and March of 2018, and that's shown as the damping in manual mode. But the orange line with the gate, that level appears to be static. So, does that indicate that no, no human is moving the gate during that time? So it's not just being in manual mode, but not attending to the gate is what led to the water level fluctuation?
Yep, that is correct. So, there is the ability to raise and lower the gates themselves while in manual mode. However, it does require a human to actually do it, pushing those buttons to adjust the gate levels themselves. Next slide, Dave. So in 2019, there is many more periods of automatic fluctuation. And again, we, we notice a couple out of compliance events, which we'll go into later as we go through our presentation. And those out of compliance events are normally during periods of high precipitation or during seasonal changes while in automatic mode. And again, you can see kind of that beginning of April period, that is when we have our spring melts, which equates to a lot of precipitation and increased lake levels. And that equates to a large amount of discharge from the dam. So if you see our orange line going up fairly drastically while in orifice mode, it is attempting as much as possible to discharge that retained water because we are over our DNR maximum amount. Now, as we go into our spring to summer levels, we are again out of compliance with the DNR operating orders because we cannot control the precipitation. We are attempting to retain as much water as possible to reach those median levels of summer, but it does take a couple of weeks for us to do that based on normal precipitation rates, at which point you can see fairly minimal discharge throughout the summer in 2019 until we reach our fall drawdown, is, which is what people normally refer to it as. So a drastic amount of water was discharged from the dam to drop that lake level to fall operating procedures, or at least fall operating standards. Now, if we notice a couple of the anomalies again, or at least out of compliance events, if we look towards the end of 2019, you can see that yellow line, it's where we have a static orange line in our gate elevation, which equates to manual mode of operation. During that time, that discharge spent static, the gate elevation has not fluctuated, at which point we retained too much water and again went out of compliance with the DNR operating standards. When it was switched back into automatic mode, which is where that yellow line ends, we then discharged quite a bit of substantial water in orifice mode and fairly quickly returned within our median operating standards at the end of 2019. Next slide, Dave. In 2020, we notice right away that at the beginning of the year, there was a sustained period of manual mode of operation. Now, again, the conclusion is, during that period of manual operation, we are retaining too much water without adjusting the gate elevation, which equates to- Without adjusting the gate elevation, which equates to being over the DNR required operating levels. When it was switched back into automatic mode, and I believe that is, let's see. March, I was gonna say, sorry. Fluctuating between close up and far away is a little difficult for me. But we retain, we go back into a orifice mode at a fairly high discharge rates. And you can see that lake level fairly quickly drop within our median operating procedures. Correct, yep, to meet compliance. So within a very short amount of time, we meet that compliance while switching back into automatic mode due to high amounts of discharge. As we go within our summer levels, again, we really don't discharge that much water or retain that much water. We definitely see more of a static fluctuation of our gate elevation within the summer months. Until we go back into our fall operating practices and discharge quite a bit amount of water to meet our fall operating levels. So hopefully you guys are kind of noticing a, a bit of a pattern here as far as what those gate levels equate to in lake level. So the higher the gate elevation means more water is being discharged. But if we were to just publish those numbers and give you guys the numbers, it doesn't create a fairly good understanding as far as what that gate elevation actually equates to. Next slide, Dave. So the conclusions that we can make from those three years of collected data. Is that we were running in automatic mode for the majority of the time. With the exceptions of a few, a few circumstances of manual operation. With one extended period of manual operation to which we are out of compliance or above the DNR maximum required elevations. And we were within our range or goal for the most of the time within those three years of operation. Next slide, Dave. Now here's where we actually meet quite a few of those different exceptions within those rules. So we continued or we, we started 2021, operating in automatic mode. Of which we see our blue line being fairly static within the median of those minimum and maximum levels. And this is what people refer to as the transducer faults. And or the two by four incident is what I've referred to it as multiple times. So I've heard two certain different circumstances, either two by four impeding the actual mechanical functions of the dam. As well as a confirmed transducer failure. So I know we gave a couple presentations as far as what this transducer does. What a pressure transducer does is measure the actual lake elevations. And what that does is provide the data to the PLCs, which is the computer brain telling us or basically telling the dam what to do. There was a confirmed transducer failure during this period. And that you can see the lake levels absolutely off the charts extremely sporadic. And it was a fairly substantial amount of time before that transducer fault was diagnosed. If I can describe our actual emergency management practices for the dam itself. There's a fairly involved system that is integrated within the dam as far as a notification system. That notification system does alert dam operators within a tree list every 10 minutes of a confirmed fault. Or if there's a diagnosed fault. So if the PLCs are not receiving correct data, incorrect data and or abnormal data. It basically senses something is wrong, please address it. City staff is notified during this period, I do believe that that system was not being acknowledged during the actual management of the dam itself. The actual response time when we have those alert systems in basically in operation. Could be a matter of minutes between an actual notification and an actual member of city staff being on site to address that fault. So this is a difference between prior management practices and current management practices of the dam. At this point, the transducer was replaced. And at this point in 2021, we did have a drought year of which we saw. Very, very low levels within our lake for the sustained amount of the summer seasons. And one of the things that I do want to point out as well, we have an additional data point on this dam or on this graph. And if you actually see our orange line at the end of summer is slightly below our blue line, which is our lake level. So even though we are below the minimum lake levels. That raises the question of why is our dam actually lower than the lake levels themselves? The conclusion that we have drawn is that this was the. Transducer calibration issue that we had diagnosed earlier this year. We previously referred to it as instrument drift over the course of this five-year operation period. Our assumption at this point is it necessarily may have not been calibrated correctly at that point. So that's why we may actually see the orange line below our blue line towards the end of 2021. Next slide, Dave. So reiterating, we were running in manual mode for the majority of the time. There was a pressure transducer failure that was diagnosed this year and was corrected. And we are assuming, that's why we said possible transducer calibration issue. Of why we noticed the dam level actually being lower than lake level, even during those periods of minimum water. Next slide, Dave. 2022 showed the largest amount of DNR non-compliance within our operating orders. And we are running in manual mode for the majority or basically the entirety of 2022 season. And if we go to our April periods, that's exactly when we have our increased amounts of precipitation due to. Spring melts, our snow melt and just increased levels of spring precipitation. We were holding too much water within the dam. And that automatically put us within range of our summer operating standards, even though we were not at our summer levels. And I know, I think a lot of residents really applauded this, but at the same time, it's not something necessarily to applaud because we were outside of the DNR operating standards. But what you can see here is even though we were in manual mode, there was physical alterations of the gate levels within here. So as you see those long periods of sustained no activity in the gate levels. You can see a little bit more of a plateau rather than more frequent drastic gate elevation changes. So that is a person physically changing the actual height of the dam itself. And that is much more difficult to retain compliance within that operating order. And during the fall drawdown period, you can see that we are operating in weir mode while having manual operation of the dam itself. And what we concluded again is that operating weir mode does not nearly discharge enough water to meet compliance. So like I said, this is a difference between prior management practices and current management practices and seeing a bit of the trends. Next slide, Dave. So to recap, oh, if you could go, we are missing the 2023 graph, Dave, if you can go up to this one. So this is absolutely the, most questions we received regarding lake levels, at least within my tenure here. And we proceeded 2023 or began 2023 still operating within that manual mode of operation. Again, we were actually out of compliance at the beginning of the year. And we did return to automatic mode of operation during the spring precipitation levels and April of this year. That is basically our increased again precipitation levels due to spring melts. This is when I overview the actual operating system itself. And looked at the past management practices versus what we would like to do in the future. I concluded that we would like to or prefer to operate in automatic mode because we saw less areas of non-compliance while operating in automatic mode. So beginning in the, prior to May, we were operating in automatic mode. At which point we did not receive the amounts of precipitation required to put us within compliance for DNR operating orders in summer. Due to public concern and or review of the dam system itself. We retained manual operation at minimal discharge or minimum required amounts of discharge throughout the entirety of summer. Some of the few changes that you see in gate elevation there are either during times of diagnostics inspections. And or recalibration of the dam itself when we had IPS, which is Integrated Process Solutions, review the dam itself. But we do see a continuous decline in the lake levels despite us operating at our minimum discharge throughout the entirety of summer. Next slide, Dave. So that is our recap of 2022 and 2023. For the majority of the time, it was ran in manual mode. Now what we have here is basically a summary of our out of compliance events. Within the last five years of data collection. The majority of which of those are either during periods of mass amounts of precipitation in spring. And or changes of seasonal events in the operating order. Or periods of manual operation is the largest exception. So more likely than not during operating in manual mode, we experienced a higher amount of non-compliance events. Dwayne, if you want to touch on the yellow highlighted section on here.
So a little bit on the colors, all of the green, that is a fall, fall to or summer to fall transition. Or a spring to summer transition. So many of those, as we've all discussed in the past, that it's impossible to change in one day. Raise the water level several inches. And so every spring, there will be an out of, there will be a DNR range, out of DNR range event. Same thing typically will happen in the fall. So those, of all those events, those are the green ones. The yellow, as Eric had mentioned, it really occurred, they were three events during that time. But they were all consecutive. It continued to be out of range, but there were several things that were affecting it. One was the spring transition, then we headed into the transducer failure. And then there was a portion of that time where actually. The manual gate precip was not enough to gain the level in the drought. So rather than equate it to three different events, we combined them into one. The pink columns obviously are pretty self-explanatory, high versus low, out of compliance and manual versus automatic mode. Next slide, Dave. I, I guess it's pretty clear from that last slide, most of the events occurred during periods of seasonal transitions. Heavy rainfall or snow melt events or during manual operation. And, and fewer of those events occurred when the dam was operating in automatic mode. Next slide, Dave. Dave, before we go over this slide, we're going to talk about a case study and either Drake or I will. But can you go back to the 23 chart, please? Thank you. So I want everybody to look at late August, there's a little spike in the blue line. It, it rose several inches and then several days later it dropped. And note where the, the gate is in high weir, no flow. Meaning there was no flow other than what was going under the dam for the minimum flow. The lake level rose and it, and it declined. Dave, can you go back to the other slide? Drake, you or I?
I'll give it a go here. So we, obviously, I, at the end of August, we experienced a rain event, which rose the lake level a significant amount. And immediately following that precipitation event at a time when we knew no water was flowing over the dam. And the dam was in manual mode, so only the minimum flow was going under. So we know that the dam was in a mode that it was, should be retaining water. And yet we still saw the water level continue to decrease over the next several days. So August 25th, we had the rain event on August 29th. We had fallen, excuse me, 1.75 inches. To put that into terms of what the dam would have needed to be doing to have been responsible for that drop. Thirty-five cubic feet of water per second would have been needing to pass through that dam for 66 consecutive hours. So the discharge pipe would have had water a foot deep. So you'll remember, we're talking about less than half an inch when minimum flow is going over. So we would have needed to have a water a foot deep and traveling at a velocity of seven feet per second for those 66 hours. So a noticeable flow of water, something that we would have been able to observe. And that is not possible to achieve in the mode of operation that the dam was set in at that time. And it would have needed to have been in a orifice mode where that bottom gate is lifted up and water is. Flowing through that at a, at a, at a significant rate. And so we had it set in manual mode, so we know exactly where it was. We know it was set above the lake level, so it wasn't going over. And we know that it wasn't operating in orifice mode. Because then we would have actually seen the, the level of the gate be much, much higher. Than what the data is showing you that it was at because it would have been at its maximum height to hook that lower plate and pull it up to allow for additional. Flow under, so that is only one case study that we did, one instance of lake levels decreasing. But in that instance, we can say with confidence that that decrease in water level we experienced following a significant amount of precipitation. Can't be assigned to flow through the dam to equate to that 1.75 inch drop that we saw over those 66 hours.
Next slide, Dave.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes ma'am.
Where is the lake depth measured?
As far as lake depth or lake elevation, so, so, so what we're, what we're actually measuring is that, that pressure transducer that I referred to before. Is actually in a, it, it almost looks kind of like a well casing, actual apparatus for the most part. But it's in a protected tube that's actually on the concrete embankment that is to the south of the dam. So it is next to the dam, you're actually going to see a tamper-proofed system of which that pressure transducer is actually in. So you cannot see the pressure transducer itself, but you can see the actual structure that is housed within.
Okay, thank you.
So this is just a recap of that actual case study itself. If you could go to the next slide, Dave. So looking at these last five years of collected data. Noticing some, not necessarily inefficiencies, but potential efficiencies that we can make as far as management practices and what we've seen in the last couple of years. We can make the conclusions that we should, or at least in operating mode, in automatic mode. We eliminate that element of human error. We saw more out of DNR compliance events when we were operating in manual mode versus when we were in automatic mode. The, the next bullet point is, and this actually includes myself as well. Being the actual manager of the dam, I didn't necessarily understand how the system actually operates when I first came in. It required a fairly substantial amount of research and understanding and questions being asked. As far as what am I looking at as far as a physical representation of the dam versus our actual dashboard and diagnostic system that we have here. I believe we do have some folks in the audience that definitely share some of those experiences. And this definitely equates to the dam management policy that was listed on the city's website. Non-accurately reflecting the actual infrastructure that we do have. So the dam management policy that we had on our website. Reiterated the removal of boards within the actual system itself to control lake levels. That is the existing infrastructure. So I feel like seeing the system itself and changing these actual gate elevations between the orifice and weir mode. People may actually get alarmed when they see that amount of water actually flowing through the system. However, that is by design and calibrated to be within that median operating standard. So I think it was a bit of a misunderstanding and at least a non-publishing of the actual data as far as how this thing operates and a mutual understanding. The next conclusion that I, I feel fairly confident that we can make is the dam operation itself is not responsible for the low lake levels within 2023. And I do believe that there are other non-confirmed or undiagnosed forms of water loss that may be responsible for it. And the reason I referred to this as non-confirmed or undiagnosed. Is we have not conducted the studies to actually research what is actually concluding or the conclusion of the low lake levels. Is it a change in hydrology, which is some of the things that are brought up by some other experts? I am sure there are other forms of water loss, obviously, within the lake. I just do not have the means to actually collect that data. And if we do want to figure out those, it would require further studies to be conducted. Next slide, Dave. So as far as a city staff's perspective, these are the proposed operating changes. Again, by default, I would prefer that we operate in automatic mode. Perform regular diagnostics chest on the system programs, so that's the actual PLCs itself. Here we have listed instrument drift. I would just say a check on calibration of the systems itself. We are required to perform DNR required infrastructure checks every other year. What infrastructure checks are is the actual discharge chute. Or we said box culvert previously on some of the slides, we are checking the infrastructure of the dam itself, the mechanical operations of it. But what this would actually do is check our pressure transducers, make sure they are collecting and recording the correct data. In regards to atmospheric pressure and lake levels and make sure that the system is accurately reading them. The next is a change in management practices, which we haven't been doing since March of 2023 of this year. This is when I kind of saw some of those recurring trends within the dam itself. What I wanted to do is make sure the dashboard that we receive instant data on, on our computers and or mobile devices. That what we are being shown on our screens equates accurately what is actually being represented physically at the dam. That has been in place and implemented. that has been in place and implemented since March of twenty-three. The next is during periods of low water levels. When I mentioned that in automatic mode, we are approximately one-half inch above lake levels during periods of low water levels. Uh, we are proposing to reprogram some of the PLCs to have a minimum of six inches above water level while still retaining that minimum discharge. This just, uh, increases the likelihood that we are going to retain as much precipitation as possible during low water levels. Uh, the next is currently from past management practices, we are operating by default at the median between the minimum and maximum of those operating levels. We are trying to hold right dead nuts between the center of those two. Uh, we do have the capability while still being in compliance to operate a little bit closer to the maximum levels. Uh, we're proposing that we instead of operate at the standard median to operate in the middle of the median itself and the maximum. The next is the thirty-minute adjustment cycle to retain more precipitation. This was implemented when we had the system programmers come and do the diagnostics check on the dam. And we have not had the opportunity to actually see if there's a difference within this reprogramming, because we have sustained manual mode of operation throughout the rest of the year. And then, uh, last but most certainly not least is updating of our dam management policy, which has been underway since the beginning of this summer. Any questions at all? I know that's a lot of information to take in. Uh, hopefully you do understand that, uh, just the publishing of those gate elevation numbers definitely does not equate to an understanding as far as what that gate elevation equates to in lake levels. So hopefully that helps people understand the dam functions.
Thank you, Dwayne and Eric. So let's start with any questions or comments that we have from their presentation. Then we also have a memo from Drake and we can talk through, um, those options and considerations as well. So any questions for Dwayne or Eric?
What are the, uh, potential conflicts of being over or under DNR compliance?
And a isolated event. So it is the discretion of the DNR when and how to enforce their water level orders. But I do think context matters as to what led to the out of compliance event and what steps did the city take to bring ourselves back into compliance?
Absolutely correct. So if we, um, if we attempt as much as possible, if we notice a fault or not necessarily fault, but if we notice we are out of compliance fairly quickly and are doing everything within our power to regain compliance, I think that is absolutely understandable within the DNR as far as their enforcement practices.
I was just thinking about, um, being over the, the max water level and how some people would say, what's wrong with that? And the, the potential issues that go with being over that max have even different kind of catastrophic event or effects as being under. So I was just trying to understand if there was more to it besides, um, if, besides being fined by the DNR.
I, I will say as, uh, the facilitator for the dam, if I'm the grounds and facilities director and I am charged with managing the dam, uh, under all circumstances, I will be managing the dam to the actual DNR ordering compliance as much as possible.
Maybe I could just add a comment to that. I mean, I could see some other consequences besides DNR enforcement, such as anyone with low-lying property. If the water level is held too high, you know, that could cause erosion or flooding their septic system, you know, various things like that. Other, other kinds of consequences certainly could occur.
As manager, I will, uh, I will not intentionally try to go above or below the DNR required amounts.
Any other questions, comments?
Um, thank you. That was very detailed. My thought process during your presentation kind of tracked the same as my thought process during the joint Rock Lake Committee presentation where I started to have questions. And then we get to this rain event in the summer of twenty-three and we say, oh, it's maybe really not the dam. So then that leaves us more questions. What is causing that? I'm going to ask a question about that in a second. But before I get there, what I hear time and time again from people and residents specifically with experience on the lake is that before the new dam went into operation in twenty-eighteen, things were fine. After the dam, things are not fine. So my first question on that basis, is there any, was there any change to the way that the lake levels recorded between or before twenty-eighteen to now?
Yes, so there are, um, daily measurings or at least, uh, within a period of six months, there are fifteen-minute intervals, every single fifteen minutes as far as collected data points on the lake levels themselves. Is an automated system that does collect that data. And this is exactly why we are able to put this presentation together is because we have collected data over the past five years. So I can go to each individual day within the past five years and find those recorded lake level reports. Now, as far as past management practices of lake level recordings, this is something that I had some requests from Rock Lake Improvement as far as the exact same request earlier this season. Um, we had inconsistent at-best reports as far as lake, recorded lake levels previous to the dam. Um, I think they were most likely recorded during periods of high precipitation or low precipitation. But as far as normal operating practices of recording that lake level, we have fairly inconsistent data.
Okay, and the, go ahead.
I was going to ask Eric, do you know where they manually recorded?
Yep, they were manually recorded. There was not an automated system to record those lake levels. So we do have that actual gauge that is next to the actual concrete structure itself. If data were to be collected, it actually required a person to go down there and record a daily, uh, a daily measure of the lake level.
So I appreciate that background because I didn't know that there was actually a difference between recordings before twenty-eighteen and now. You know, data also exists in people who they could get their boat in before, they cannot get their boat in now. That's a data point. Um, so this is rhetorical. Nobody has to answer it tonight, certainly not. Um, is it possible that before twenty-eighteen in the operation of the new dam, were we consistently over the DNR max? That's a point that I would like to know. I don't think it's been presented in any of the data tonight. I don't know that anybody's prepared to answer that. My final question that I said I would come back to, um, is with the rain event, um, I know there's a possible decision tonight, maybe based on this conversation, but has any of the city staff, um, taken that data from the rain event to the DNR? And, you know, as a soft ask, here's what we're experiencing. Does the DNR have any information that would help us, um, come up with a rationale or reason why this is occurring? And you kind of mentioned environmental factors, Mr. Schreiner, but...
The DNR has been provided the same data that we presented tonight. So they're regularly provided the actual gate elevations as well as their lake elevations. Um, so they have seen this presentation as well. And I'm in normal correspondence with some of the people at the DNR regarding it. It is my understanding at least that unless there is an actual request to perform a study or collect that data, um, that we are going to let, for lack of a better term, nature take its course. So for example, to, I, I necessarily can't answer your previous question, Catherine, but, um, looking at twenty-twenty-two, uh, a lot of people regard that as a fairly standard, normal, good operation as far as water levels within twenty-twenty-two regarding recreation. People could be able to get their boats on and off. Um, my, my question, or at least expanding on to your initial question, is we were within the median requirements of the DNR operating order during twenty-twenty-two. So, oh, Dwayne, if you want to have anything to add? Yep, exactly.
And I don't, so to, to provide you with, I think, the best answer, um, that we're going to be able to come up with is we can't discount the scenario that you brought up, that the, um, that we may have been, um, consistently above maximum based on the, uh, practices that we had in place at that time. I don't know that we will have the capability to confirm that because of the, um, rudimentary system that was in place, which leads to, uh, inadequate or, uh, any insufficient data to, to get to the bottom of that. So it's possible, um, but I don't know that we'll ever be able to confirm that.
And this, this goes back to, uh, a couple of points within this presentation. I, I talked about past management practices versus current management practices. Um, I just want to make sure that what we experienced in the past as far as how we operated the dam and the lake levels itself does not necessarily reflect how we are going to be doing it in the future and how we have been doing it throughout this period. Uh, like I said, with the automated system that we have and the infrastructure that we have, uh, I will do what I can as far as actual management of the dam structure itself to be within compliance and to make sure that it is operating correctly.
So just, I, I had a couple of questions and one thought in follow-up to what you asked, Mrs. Bishop. It does occur to me that, um, and, and I think perhaps it's obvious that with the new dam, it's a higher level of sophistication and precision that comes with the software, presumably when it was constructed. There was updated survey benchmarks and all of that kind of stuff to make sure, um, that it's operating correctly. And so as you said, if, if there was less precision in the old way, people on the lake may have gotten accustomed to a certain water level and now it seems to be lower, even though it might be more precise and more accurately meeting the DNR requirements. But maybe we, maybe we don't have enough information or maybe it's not worth our time to do that study. I don't know.
And we'll keep evaluating and analyzing the dam, the data we have, uh, the operations of the dam to determine if there is anything, any fault that we can find. We will address it, you know, as quickly as possible. We have not yet come across something that would explain the reductions in lake levels that we're seeing this year. Um, but we're not stopping this. It's not that we're done evaluating the dam. We're going to continue to do so. And if we can find something, we would, we'd love to be able to point to something that this is the problem that's creating, this is the issue that's creating a problem that is reducing, you know, the quality of, of enjoyment of the lake, of our riparian owners and, um, you know, the users of the lake. We, we would strive to fix that as quickly as possible. We have just yet to come across a tangible thing that we can, that we can adjust that will significantly alter, um, the lake level to a, a higher amount than what we're seeing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say I had two questions. One is, um, wondering, um, is there any data or even anecdotally information about, um, calls from waterfront property owners, you know? Every year in this, you know, if, if, if the water level doesn't go up as fast as perhaps some people might hope, does that generate more calls? In twenty-twenty-two, where the water level was high, you know, starting in, in April, then maybe there weren't calls because people prefer that. I mean, is there any even kind of anecdotal information to help us understand that?
You don't have Eric's experience or, you know, community and past staff experience?
I, I would say, uh, my first year was mid-two thousand twenty-one. The majority of my correspondence in two thousand twenty-one was regarding the low lake levels. Two thousand twenty-two was a refreshing year, even though we were out of compliance as far as the dam operation itself. Uh, we were at high lake levels. So it was nice to be able to focus on something other than lake levels in two thousand twenty-two. Two thousand twenty-three has been a significant majority of my time on public correspondence has been spent on answering questions. Uh, like I said, the goal here is with a sophisticated system and that changing of gate elevation, there's definitely a, uh, difficult understanding as far as what are you actually seeing on the dam, especially when it raises questions regarding low lake levels. Our goal here, like Drake said, is to continue compiling this data. In addition to just lake level reports that are going to be posted monthly, we are also going to be continuing creating these charts that show the, uh, relationship between the gate elevation as well as the lake levels. And that's something that I would like to continue doing for, as far as a, a standard practice.
Thank you. So my other question is about the manual mode. Um, is there anything in our standard operating procedures or is there any documentation from the five years that you showed us of, um, why, uh, the dam was put into manual mode when it was, you know, each time that that happened?
For sustained periods of operation, no. The intent for manual mode, uh, referencing the IOM document, which is basically just our, our operating procedure or management of the actual dam itself. Maintenance or, uh, I'm sorry, um, manual mode is, uh, intentionally used or put there for either emergency situations, if we need to completely shut the dam down, if there is either a diagnosed fault in the system or if there's maintenance that is being performed on the dam itself. So it was designed by default to be operated in automatic mode.
Okay, so again, I guess I just, again, want to make sure I understand. So, well, okay, so you described what's in the manual. So do you have any information to indicate why? And, and some of the years prior to when you were, um, operating, why the dam might have been put into manual mode?
They would be, uh, most likely assumptions for the most part, because like I said, past management practices do not reflect current management practices. I do believe that the, uh, fluctuations of the dam, whether it be during orifice mode and high amounts of water discharge or weir mode being low amounts of discharge and just seeing that fluctuation. I do think that reiterated to, um, a lot more, uh, public involvement and questions and so forth. However, what I would like to do is definitely, uh, be transparent, inform people as far as the actual dam management practices itself. So that's why I'd like to operate in automatic by default.
So the short answer is no. We don't have, uh, we don't have a record of why in years past the dam would have been placed into manual mode for extended periods of time.
So, and I guess just then a comment to follow up on that. I mean, I, I support the staff recommendation to operate in automatic mode. I mean, that's why we invested in that system. Um, and I think it would be good to look at the procedures and have a clear understanding of when it goes into manual mode and have clear documentation each time it's put into manual mode, why that occurred and then when it came back out again. So that can all be, you know, tracked a little bit more closely.
Ms. Carla?
Yes. Um, getting off of the point that Catherine was making regarding data, I was looking online at drought.gov, which is part of NOAA. And according to their, uh, system, Jefferson County this year is categorized as a D-three. Majority of the, um, the scale goes from D-zero to D-four. D, D-zero is abnormally dry. D-four is really bad drought. We are in D-three. So the fact that NOAA recognizes that we are in a drought year as well does play a role in it, but that's, you know, that's what we cannot control. The conversation that we're having right now is about what we can control. And I recognize that. I just wanted to add that information that we do, we are experiencing a drought.
So it, um, the conversation kind of leads into what can the council do? Um, so the memo includes my best summary of Joint Rock Lake's potential options, Rock Lake Improvement Association's recommendation. And then there's also a section that includes things, changes we could make now that do not require a, a change in the water level order, but may result in, um, additional retaining of water earlier and throughout the summer. So that's kind, those are the things you've heard from now. If we, for example, if in the spring, we're managing closer to the maximum, by the time we get to that May first deadline, the gap we have to get from our spring level to our summer level is going to be smaller than if we're managing to the median. So that is one, is, is, you know, managing closer to the maximum is one way we could attempt to, um, uh, have higher water levels on, on Rock Lake. You know, adjusting the programming so that it's, you know, more than a half an inch above the water level so that, and that it re, it recalibrates or that's the incorrect word, so that the dam adjusts, um, more frequently will, will result in, um, in retaining additional precipitation during those events. How significant that may be, I can't, I can't say, but at least we get a hot, a heavy rainfall, the, the PLC is going to know that where the water levels are rising and that if we're below where we want to be, that that dam should be, you know, rising higher, especially if we program it where in periods of low water, we're even higher or even that dam is programmed to be even higher than it is before we would get into a period, um, where if it was too high above the water level, it would allow for a, a non-compliant event. Um, I'll do my best on, you know, Joint Rock Lake had some, had some recommendations, um, some of which involved, um, a, a request to permanently alter the water, the water level order. Um, you know, it ranged from, you know, seeking a change to the order to allow us to gradually come into compliance instead of these stark differences we see now that we can't overnight jump to our summer water levels. It's, it's not possible. Um, so could, would the DNR allow us to gradually raise that through the month of April so that by May, uh, we were where we wanted to be? Um, you know, that's, we could, we could explore that option. Um, and I won't go through each of their points, but, you know, some more permanent changes. Now, Rock Lake Improvement Association had, uh, you know, the idea of asking for a temporary waiver of our order. Now, Rock Lake Improvement Association had, you know, the idea of asking for a temporary waiver of our order in order to allow for both the DNR and the city to kind of study how that change has an effect on the lake and whether the DNR views it as problematic related to walleye spawning and the impact on the wetlands and shorelines and other ecological considerations of the lake. So if we want to do, make a change to the water level order, you don't have to, you don't have to decide tonight. You can basically tell staff what direction you'd like to go and we can draft the formal, the resolution that would make that request to the DNR. We can implement things administratively. There's really that whole range of things we can do that we have to ask for change in our water level order to achieve or the things that we can do right now without, while still operating within our current water level order.
There was one thing the Joint Rock Lake Committee mentioned and I wonder if you could reiterate for us, Drake, because I think you were on a call with DNR where they indicated if the city asked for a change in water level order, what might DNR do? And I think that's really important for us to be aware of.
So the main consideration is on the fall water level. So right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, October 30th is our date to achieve our winter level. Best practice and DNR preference right now is October 1st achieving that level for ecological considerations largely that that date ensures that there won't be, is the safest date to operate on that won't result in a mass die-off of species within the lake. And so we are, we, they informed us with some certainty that that will likely change. You know, if we make a request, they could change it without us even making a request. Now, you know, that they've, they're kind of aware, you know, of that difference in their preference. They did not say that they would do that, but if we do request it, I think it is a high likelihood that they will adjust that back end water level to get to the winter level by October 1st rather than our current date of October 30th. So I did, in that call, I did ask the question of the DNR. I said, is there a chance, a hypothetical scenario where the city council requests that we be able to start retaining water earlier in April, for example? So April 15th, we get to summer water levels. Is there a chance that the DNR says no to retaining water earlier, but then also reduces the water levels on the back end to that October 1st? And they said, it is a possibility. It's not a guarantee. They could very well say yes to a change in the water, in the water level order. But it is possible that through the process of making the request that we stay at the May 1st date that we have now and move to the October 1st date from the October 30th date that we currently have.
One thing that I might add if I could is previously we always operated at the median. We would not be out of compliance if we just operate closer to the maximum. Like I said, if we are between the median currently and the maximum, we are still within DNR compliance. It's just been normal operating procedures to operate absolutely within the middle of that DNR operating order.
Ms. Carler?
Yes.
To your point, Mr. Schreiner, the presentation at the last meeting said too that we have the capacity to reduce the levels in the fall within a shorter timeframe than what we're actually doing, which I think would alleviate some of what you're seeing. But what I wanted to say is if we're going to go to the DNR with an ask to increase the maximum water level amount, do we know what that number is that we're going to ask them for?
No.
What would you need to get that number or to come up with a recommendation for the maximum height?
Anything I'd tell you tonight I would be speculating on. I don't know. I'd have to review other processes that other jurisdictions have gone to to adjust the actual water level, the actual water level. Most of our review has been around the timeframe in which we get to the current water levels that are mandated. So whether to get, try to get to them earlier or have the summer level be longer. But I would have to, there are, there's communities who have gone through processes before, but I, I can't answer for you what the target water level should be at the maximum if we were to request that change.
Okay, I think I would want to know what we would be asking for before we go and ask. So what I'm reading is currently from the 92 order that was provided in the last presentation's exhibit was the maximum, just by way of example, from November 1st to spring breakup is 7.5. So we would need to know if we want the max to stay at or be like 7.75, 8? What are we looking at and what would achieve both the ecological concerns that I know a lot of organizations here have, including the DNR, as well as our residents and the use of the lake and everything that that affords our city?
I'd like to kind of piggyback on your comments here, Mrs. Bishop, because I think that's really kind of getting to the heart of it. The input that I've heard from most citizens is that they want to have sort of an assurance of recreational water levels in the summer without causing, you know, adverse ecological impacts. So if we can get a change in the order that makes it more successful for us to have those reliable summer water levels and not cause ecological impacts, I think that that would be the goal. And what that exact level is, I think is an excellent question. To me, what is concerning about our current water level order is that it does have this one day in the spring and this one day in the fall. So it is essentially not possible to be in compliance. You can't bring up the water all in one day in the spring, nor would we probably want to do it that way and conversely in the fall. I don't, it's, it may not, the dam may not even have the capacity. It might. But, you know, to, it's, so it's sort of like we're set up to not be able to even really be in compliance. And if you look at some of the earlier years that you shared with us, they each have kind of this ramp up in the spring and a ramp down in the fall. And so then to me, it seems like we want some flexibility in, for the recreational use. Is there some flexibility to ramp up earlier in the spring? And is there the ability to have the order have some overlap between those seasons so that it's not setting us up to always be out of compliance every spring and every fall during that transition? But as you said, what that number is, you know, do we ask for a change in the summer minimum or in the spring maximum? I'm not really sure how to choose those numbers. Mr. Waters?
Listening to the last two meetings, now my mic is on. Listening to the last two meetings, now we know that the dam's operating properly. We know that nature plays its role. It will raise and lower depending on what, what happens with the rainfall. We have a DNR standard that I believe has some range on the front side and the backside of summer, right? So we can actually work with that range a little bit. Maybe bring the water up a little bit sooner than we are currently to bring those levels up so that we can achieve the summer level a little bit better than what we may be doing right now. And in the fall, we're emptying around September 15th. Maybe we can keep that water a little bit longer going into the fall so that the recreation can continue and hopefully won't have any ecological problems. So that, that's a sway that we can work with. Does that need to come from council or is that something we can work with from a city staff standpoint? Where do we stand on that?
I think it would be beneficial. Essentially, we would, we can update the dam management policy and we can bring that forward to the city council for ratification. And in that document, it essentially state that it is the city's intent to operate the dam in such a way that we are managing, you know, within some sort of range of the maximum, that we're not managing to the median. So at any given time during the season, we're, we're trying to be closer to that maximum than we are, than we are to the median. And then that would be ratified in that policy that would then inform how Eric operates that dam throughout the year.
Because we know when we're at that summer level, that recreation is appreciated. I mean, they can operate at those levels and, and there seems to be no issues. The issue seemed to be when it doesn't come up as quick as we want it to or when it maybe goes down too quickly and people can't get their boats off lifts and things like that. But of course, we don't want to mess with the salamanders and turtles. We want to make sure and the salmon that they, they have what they need. So if we can do that within the current parameters, we just need to, to work with that.
Yes, we could, we could make those changes to work within, to manage the dam differently than we have been within the current order that would allow us to draw water up earlier and hit that summer level sooner. And then on the back end as well, just as you've stated, start the drawdown closer to when we need to gain compliance rather than September 15th where we do it now. So yes, we can do that.
And then there's the elephant in the room about that August event and how the water was drawn out of the lake somehow. And that seems to be maybe outside the scope of city council. I think we need to get other organizations involved, but it is something to be concerned about because it is the preservation of our lake. And whatever's happening there, we want to recognize that. Is it an aquifer issue? Is it a soil issue? What is happening there? And there probably needs to be further study. And I'm not sure where the money would come from for that type of study. But it is something that, that we need to recognize and, and figure out a way to take action.
Mr. Waters, I appreciate you bringing that up. And I think Mr. Fields, you kind of highlighted that at our last meeting saying, you know, we might have a whole nother problem here. If the dam works properly, then why, why is it going down? I would guess with the right amount of money, we could do an extensive study and hire hydrogeologists and attempt to try to figure that out, see what, what's happening with groundwater and who perhaps is withdrawing water from the lake that maybe is contributing to it. I really like, Mr. Waters, your suggestion, which I think kind of goes with the Joint Rock Lake Committee's option number four, which is don't ask for order changes, but operate the dam differently within the order. And I think you're, and it doesn't mean that we won't ask for a water level order change in the future, but maybe just for right now, let's try to optimize how we operate within the order. And I think all the alternatives that you've listed are things that staff has done or is planning to do. So I like all of those. The only one I have a question about, this 30-minute cycle adjustment versus the 60-minute? The only question, I mean, I can see where it would be more quick to respond to any changes, but if you're going to program the dam to be set where the gate's six inches above the water level when the water level is low, I'm not sure that that 30 versus 60 minutes is really that important. I mean, certainly nobody, if the water level's low, no waterfront owner wants to see water going over the top. But if it's only for that hour while it's adjusting, so that's the only one I, I guess I'm kind of ambivalent about. I'm not sure if that's important to not. But what do other folks think about, you know, definitely having staff follow through on all the alternatives that are listed on the second page? Mr. Fields?
No, I like the idea of the four with us, trying to just manage the dam better, see how it goes for another season, see if this drought cycle that we're in, if it extends or maybe if it cures itself.
I think there's one other piece of information I want to know. And it's about the language from the last presentation that there are exceptions that the DNR will grant for drought periods. And then Ms. Quinn now clarifying tonight that we are in a drought per NOAA, which is N-O-A-A, not Noah, the name. And it's asking the DNR, what are they prepared to let us do, knowing that we are in a drought if that meets their definitions per their administrative rules in absence of a formal request?
So I don't want to...
We can certainly talk to the DNR about what options exist to the city during, when we're under drought conditions.
I agree. Definitely, you know, continued conversations with DNR, I think would be really good. Why, why the current order doesn't have any overlap between the transitions that would make it possible for us to comply is another sort of interesting question. But the Rock Lake Improvement Association recommendations, I think it's important to just touch on these because I, I think the idea of asking for a temporary waiver is very creative and it doesn't require the whole, you know, formally requesting an order and having the order changed. There's some statements in their recommendation that, you know, we may be in an El Niño period and that may not bode well for next year's, next spring's rainfall either. So we might be in for another similar year. I think they had a nice figure showing how the precipitation in May and June has dropped off in the last six years. I would like to see a longer data set on that if possible. And I know we don't have comparable dam water level data for those earlier years, but it would be interesting, you know, like, is this a long-term trend? That we're not having as much rain in May and June? Or was it maybe just in these last six years that we had this drop? I think that would help me and probably we would need it if we were going to ask DNR if we can raise the water level earlier. They would probably want to see some data like that to show, yeah, there's, you know, the climate has changed or whatever, that there, that we do need to capture water earlier.
Yeah, I do, the Rock Lake Improvement Association recommendation is, it is creative and it does attempt to achieve that, you know, grad, more, a more of a gradual climb to achieve the, the different water levels at the change of seasons. So it kind of eliminates that stark day where you're trying to go from spring to summer overnight that we all know we can't achieve. So I think it certainly is, it adds kind of different sections at which time different water levels are, are achieved. And, you know, the multiple Joint Rock Lake and Rock Lake Improvement Association have both brought up that when you're looking at the minimums and maximums, there's times in the DNR order where the maximum goes up, but the, the minimum actually did not. And so the median does not adjust as, as much as, as perhaps it should have because it's being held back by that minimum water level. So that's another scenario where managing to the maximum may eliminate that kind of quirk in that water level order that makes that median level perhaps lower than if you're just looking at it from a layman's perspective. It really should be because the minimum level didn't adjust with it.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so Drake, what is, what direction do you think we've given you? Let's just make sure we recap then, see where we're at.
Eric has already started changing the dam management policy. So we will continue, we'll complete that effort and we'll bring that back for ratification to the city council to ensure that it's meeting the goals of this body. You know, barring that, if anyone would like to, at any time in the future, propose, you know, and request a draft of a resolution to make some sort of request of the DNR, staff can certainly assist with that process as well. But right now, my direction, I think, is clear that we'll complete the dam management policy rewrite. We'll bring that back to this body for ratification. And then after that, publish that prominently on our, our website for all to be able to see. And we'll continue our data collection and presentation of that data as well to try and be as transparent as possible and provide as much public information as, as we can, which I think we can always improve on and in this area specifically certainly improve on to ensure that our residents have the information that they, that they need in order to understand how the dam is, is operating and will be operated in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Waters.
What timeframe for that report?
Eric?
I suppose if it's, if it's determined that that's going to be the focus here, I...
I, I would say what's a reasonable amount of time for that change to happen? I would most certainly like to have it in place prior to any seasonal changes in 2024. I would definitely like that to be in place and at least in front of city councils somewhat during winter, while we're kind of in a stasis of our DNR operating order prior to any spring changes. Now, the reprogramming of the PLCs, like we said, to be six inches above water during minimum periods of lake levels when IPS or at least the system programmers were onsite doing these evaluations. From my understanding, I am not a computer programmer, but it was fairly quick as far as their ability to adjust these PLCs. It's just a matter of scheduling that company to come onsite and actually do a PLC overview and reprogram.
Yeah, so understanding, you know, Eric will have the advisory committee as well coming up on the urban, on the urban forest. I think we would probably, I'd ask him to target late January, early February to have a completed dam management policy for the city council's review.
That was about the timeframe I was going to suggest was maybe January or February. And then that would allow time, there would be public input then as a part of that process. It'll come before the council and then there's time to do any programming, software programming. So then we'll be in automatic mode in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four with these updated operating procedures and see how that goes.
And the request that Ms. Bishop made is, can we get information on, on that from the DNR?
As to far as exceptions they may grant during drought conditions?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments, Mr. Waters?
So if we, if we make a request to DNR, what's the timeframe it takes to go through the DNR process?
We have the minimum, but we don't have, so Eric, can you explain?
It's, it's definitely dressed between each certain body of water. Speaking with Aaron Cox, as far as the water management specialist, they basically take the input of law enforcement officials, fist biologists, water management specialists, wildlife biologists. There's multiple people within the DNR that they would consult for it. I've heard anywhere from potential of six months to some lakes where they have done a full review to potentially two years. So it's very sporadic based on each body of water.
Okay.
So I would not be able to put a date as far as Rock Lake.
I will also state that during that meeting with the DNR, they did indicate that prior to any, they, at that time, we had not discussed the temporary waiver of order, so I don't know how it would, how it would apply to something like that. But they indicated that they would not approve any change to the water level order without a study of the wetland, of the wetlands completed prior to them making their decision. So they did indicate that with enough, if we waited, that they may assist the city in that process. But if the city wanted it done quickly, that it would fall on the city to fund such a study. So that is just in addition to whatever normal review process that they go through, that additional study would be required when seeking a permanent change to the water level order.
So that would probably add some time and cost to the process then as well. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank our Joint Rock Lake Committee and Rock Lake Improvement Association for all the work that they've done as entities. And we've had a number of citizens in the community that have lent their expertise looking at different issues. I think they've brought up a lot of really good questions that have helped us and staff to kind of dig into these issues. So appreciate all of that. Mr. Waters, do you have something more?
I was going to call for a five-minute recess.
Oh. Motion by Mr. Waters for a five-minute recess?
Need a second?
Second. All in favor, raise your hands. Okay, we're in a five-minute recess. Thank you, everybody. Third, and we are on agenda item letter E. Misty, would you read that title, please?
Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-seven, Community Media Day.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-seven, Community Media Day, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quednow? Any staff comment, Misty or Drake?
All I would add to the memo that's included is just a thanks to, you know, our operator that is essentially, you know, runs our community media, Dave Grooman, who records community events, community meetings, not only city meetings, but also school district and some, some town meetings as well and who makes a lot of our publicly, a lot of our meetings and deliberations publicly available, live and recorded. And that, just much thanks to him for his expertise and his commitment to producing a great product for our residents.
Thank you for that and thank you, Dave, the man behind the glass at the back of the room. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution? Okay, if not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next item is letter F, Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-eight, which is a budget amendment. Misty, would you read that title, please?
Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-eight, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to amend the twenty twenty-three capital budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-eight, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to amend the twenty twenty-three capital budget.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quednow, seconded by Mr. Fields. Staff?
As you can see in the resolution, we had a, an overage on one piece of equipment, the diamond drag, but came in under budget on the lawn mower, which.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Waters?
What's the longevity on this piece?
Yep, let's try it, please.
We have had two diamond drags in service. The first one was purchased approximately in two thousand and four. It has since basically expanded its lifespan at this point. The other one was purchased in two thousand and seven, is on its way out, but currently inoperational. We've always had, at least for the most part, two diamond drags just for efficiency sake. Since we have baseball fields on opposite sides of the city from the beaches, we like to kind of try to consolidate those resources to minimize transportation for them. Plus, the rec department does actually use that equipment to assist both us as well as the field maintenance in general. So we do normally station one at Wallace Park at a storage facility just for ease of use and then one at Sandy Beach that we do use for Rotary Park as well as both beaches. But currently, right now, both are not operational with one definitely being out of commission. One is able to be repaired, but will take some time. It does come down to availability, though. These aren't necessarily a very high-demand item. They're not frequently purchased. They're mostly used either for infield grooming or most commonly actually sand pit maintenance on golf courses. So they're just not manufactured to the extent that zero-turn lawnmowers are. So that's why we kind of have a, a little bit of a bind here as far as actually acquiring one.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a very, yeah, just a very technical question and it's in the middle. Whereas we're doing the expenses, budgeted spent amended, should the amended for diamond drag just be the plus eight thousand forty? Because we're not amending it, I don't know. It probably doesn't matter, but maybe it does.
That would probably be more technically correct, yes, I agree.
Okay, so that's in the actual resolution?
Yes, and I.
You want to make a?
Think, I will make the motion, so I move to change the number in this chart here under the amended column from twenty-four thousand forty dollars to plus eight thousand forty dollars.
Okay, motion by Ms. Bishop to amend the resolution?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Mr. Fields, are you? Okay, that's a five zero. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call on Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-eight budget amendment?
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, next item, letter G, Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-nine, which is conditional use permit. Misty, please read that title.
City Council Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-nine, Conditional Use Permit, Declarations and Findings, Grading, Filling and Exgrading on a Slope Greater Than Twenty Percent Within Three Hundred Feet of the Ordinary High Watermark of Rock Lake For the Purpose of Constructing a Boathouse, Patio, Boardwalk and Stairs, five fourteen West Lake Street, Parcel ID two four six zero seven one three one four one two zero zero three.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-nine for a conditional use permit for five fourteen West Lake Street.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, seconded by Ms. Quednow. Mr. Everson?
Good evening, council. This actual conditional use is a little bit different than the last boathouse conditional uses you guys have probably received. This one being a little bit different, that there's already an existing structure there. There's already an access corridor. Their, their proposal is to remove a failing retaining wall slash patio stair system and replace it with a boathouse and a boardwalk out to the, the pier that's there. In conversation with the, the petitioner, they, they plan to do as very little disturbance to the existing vegetation, not cutting any trees, but removing the existing structure that's failing, put it in the boathouse. It's compliant, it's allowed in that district. The reason we're coming for a conditional use is for the excavation within the three hundred feet of the overall high watermark to, to put this new structure in. The one concern at Plan Commission was, one of the plantings was frowned upon for the fact that it was an invasive species. I did email him and he got me a new landscape plan. Unfortunately, it didn't come till today, so maybe you guys did or didn't see it, but it was added late today. And it did remove that planting. I did talk to Patricia on her way out. She, she reviewed it and didn't see any issues with the new updated landscape plan either. So this one should be pretty straightforward, I think, if you kind of breeze through the memo. No real issues that I could see.
Any questions for Mr. Everson? And I would note that Mr. Lindman, who's a property owner, spoke at the Plan Commission and also agreed to not use any invasive species. There was one neighbor who testified in support and the Plan Commission voted unanimously in favor of the permit. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call on Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-nine, Conditional Use Permit for five fourteen West Lake Street?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next item is letter H, resolution 23-70, also a conditional use permit for 360 Enterprise Drive. Misty, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 23-70 Conditional Use Permit Declarations and Findings, Conditional Use Permit for Restaurant, Dining or Sit Down, 360 Enterprise Drive, parcel ID 24607141832003.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve resolution 23-70 Conditional Use Permit for 360 Enterprise Drive.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quednow, seconded by Mr. Waters. Mr. Everson, back to you.
All right, so this one should be similar to the one you guys saw a few months ago on the south side of town, where they, you guys did a conditional use approval for an ice cream parlor. This one is a little bit different, the fact that it's in the planned industrial district. They do allow you to have retail sales in the planned industrial district as long as it pertains to the principal use of the building or the, on that property. The reason we brought it to, for a conditional use, the staff kind of reviewed it, and they are going to try to do some coffee sales, and along with the pastries that they could create, they do some pot pie type, small little meals that they're going to start selling. We thought, it was pushing the envelope enough that we thought it would fit better to get a conditional use and fall under the restaurant dining and sit down. Again, this one, very little impact. The hours are minimal there. The only conditions that I had come up with was parking. We got to stripe the parking lot. We got to create a handicap parking spot. We got to make sure there's enough area there for the employees. There's a small area in the back that's existing gravel, so somewhere along the line, it either didn't all get paved or they added some gravel, and it's not in compliance, so no. Either they're going to pave what's existing to bring it into compliance. We don't allow gravel anymore for parking areas or driveways. So, they're either going to pave that, which it sounds like they're going to do, or remove the gravel and put in, plant it, put it back into grass. And then there's some unpermitted storage units that are behind the building that either they're going to get proper permits for them or get those removed also. In talking with the renter, both of these items are going to be taken care of, so.
The business owner is here tonight, if the council has any questions.
Great, great. Thanks for waiting.
You mentioned three issues. They're good with all three of those issues?
Well, so the, the, correct, so the ones, the gravel, the storage units, and then the paving, the striping of the parking lot.
Okay.
And I'll just note that there was a public hearing at the Plan Commission. No one commented, and the Plan Commission was unanimous in favor of the conditional use permit with the conditions that Mr. Everson mentioned.
Just some background, this is one of our newer businesses in the community, so we are happy to have her. They're employing five full-time employees right now, five part-time, looking to get up to 15 full-time and 15 part-time employees. And in talking with the owner, you know, distributing out of there and expanding their distribution area for their product, and I think it's been a welcome addition to the industrial park and to the community, and we thank her for investing in our community.
And I can speak to that because living in Brookstone, my daughters and I drive over there, drive. We ride our bikes over there, and then we feel silly because we have to take four pies back home with the bikes. It's proven to be interesting, but everything that we have gotten from there is excellent. So, I highly recommend, if you have some time, to go check out LC Mays.
Thank you very much, and thanks for being here tonight and waiting till this late time. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, can we have a roll call vote on resolution 23-70, which is a conditional use permit for 360 Enterprise Drive?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, next item is letter I, resolution 23-71. Misty, would you read that, please?
City Council Resolution 23-71 Condominium Plaid Approval Cedar Corner Condominium 951 and 953 Gladstone Way, parcel 24607140733075.
Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve City Council Resolution 23-71 for 951 and 953 Gladstone Way.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, seconded by Mr. Fields. Back to you, Troy.
All right, well, this is kind of starting to be a little bit of a trend, especially over in this area where we have existing duplexes that the owners are opting to convert them to condos. Obviously, it's to be able to sell them separately instead of running them or utilizing them as a duplex. The things obviously we're looking for is compliance. Everything here seems to be on the up and up. Utilities are all separated on the inside. Electrical plumbing, HVAC are all separate, just as it was designed as a duplex. The exterior, we have a single water and sewer lateral to these buildings, but the condo association takes care of if there's ever any maintenance or repairs that need to be done in that outside area. I would note that the only thing different about these, actually the next two, is that unlike a lot of the ones that you guys have already seen, probably come through on Reed Street, that they separate the parcel almost in half and split the building in half and the parcel in half, so each condo has their own property to maintain. This one is condoing off just the buildings themselves, and then everything on the remainder outside of the property is part of the association. Not that it makes your decision any different, but it's just something that I'd point out. It's a little bit unique.
Thank you, and this was unanimously approved at the Plan Commission. I think we clarified there, and just we can clarify again that we don't have the authority to approve like their condo rules and regulations and so forth. It's really just the form of ownership that we are-
Correct, yep. The city attorney reviews the condo documents on behalf of the city.
Yeah, as it pertains to the city's interests, correct, correct.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call vote on resolution 23-71 for the Cedar Corner Condominium Plaid at 951 and 953 Gladstone Way?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, next is item letter J, resolution 23-72. Misty, would you read that, please?
City Council Resolution 23-72 Condominium Plaid Approval Twin Maple Condominium 941 and 943 Gladstone Way, parcel ID 24607140733074.
Move to approve City Council Resolution 23-72 Condominium Plaid Approval for 941 and 943 Gladstone Way.
Second. Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Mr. Everson?
All right, it's kind of a deja vu here. This is one property to the west. Same property owners built about a year apart. Really, there's nothing else different about this. It's, the condo set up the exact same. It does have a different name. He's going to have, but I believe Dan has gone and read through their, all their condominium documentation, and this one should fall right in place as the other one.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, if not, can we have a roll call vote on resolution 23-72, the Twin Maple Condominium Plaid for 941 and 943 Gladstone Way?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. We just have two ordinances left tonight. First is letter K, ordinance 1256, which is the City of Lake Mills 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Misty, would you do the first reading, please?
Ordinance 1256, an ordinance to adopt the City of Lake Mills Comprehensive Plan 2040, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay, Drake, if you could walk us through the Plan Commission action, and also, this is identified as a first reading for tonight, just sort of talk about our options as a council.
Yep, so there's a memo included that kind of details what the Plan Commission approved to send back to you. There is the updated comprehensive plan included in your packet as well. We discussed whether this should come forward as a third reading, since the council did complete two readings previously. Ultimately, I decided to err on the side of caution on if the city council wanted to have three readings of the ordinance following the final document, and so that's why it's listed as a first reading. If the city council believes the previous readings are adequate, you can, of course, waive readings and move forward in that process. But that was the reasoning for why it was listed on, was to ensure that the council had the flexibility to have additional readings or move through it faster by waiving readings.
Thank you. So, I would note that the Plan Commission did take action on every one of the items that we referred to them from our previous meeting, and as Drake said, his memo summarizes the action that they took. So, is there any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. So, we've completed a first reading. Is there any interest in continuing to move this forward tonight, or would you like to have a second reading at our next meeting?
Well, just to break the ice here, I'm fine with having this as the first reading, since there were some substantial changes, giving people time to look at that.
That's my preference. I haven't had time to review it, and I know there was a question that came up tonight, and I did want to talk to that, to that citizen and see what her feelings were, so.
Okay, that sounds good. One thing I'll note, just so that we don't forget it moving forward, is that our, the original ordinance references the Plan Commission's resolution 23-1, but since we've sent it back to them twice, the last resolution that we got from them was resolution 23-3. So, we will want to change that when we get to the point of adoption here, so. Okay, so we've completed the first reading tonight, and then we'll plan on having the second reading at our next meeting. Okay, our final agenda item under council business is letter L, ordinance 1258. This is the second reading of that, so Misty, could you read that for us?
Ordinance 1258, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance, section 615-15, no parking zones, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay, so that's our second reading, so we can plan on having a third reading at our next meeting. Is there any questions or discussion tonight? I just have one question. Ms. Quednow, I'm just, out of curiosity, are you hearing anything in the neighborhood, since you live in Brookstone? I'm particularly interested that there is this parking area that is designated, and whether anybody's given, have any feedback on that.
Well, so far, no. However, I intend on talking to Chief a little bit, and Duane a little bit more about that parking spot, given the, how I travel and how many of our citizens in Brookstone travel out of Brookstone on to be, that that could potentially be a problem. So, it is a discussion I plan on having, which is why I didn't expedite to the third reading, because it's one of those things that we might have to consider alternatives.
That's great. Thanks. Well, if anybody gets any feedback on that for our next meeting, we can definitely discuss it then. Okay, so we'll plan on the third reading on ordinance 1258 at our next meeting. Recommendations for future agendas. As Drake mentioned earlier, we will have our first budget work session this Thursday, October 5th at 5:30. I believe we have dinner included in that, and you'll have some updated documents for us. You mentioned, we've got a number of things from tonight that are moving forward to next meeting, and then the Sandy Beach Restaurant RFP next meeting, did you say?
Yes, there will be a presentation.
Presentation, okay.
The council does not have to, you know, award anything at that night, but there'll be a presentation for the applicant, the proposer, to walk you through what they're suggesting.
Am I hearing only that there was one applicant? That's it?
Correct.
Okay.
So, this is one applicant, okay. And then I would note that we will have a closed session just with the council and our HR director on the annual performance review. We'll also be at our next meeting. Any other items from council members?
We'll have an additional C-
From staff?
I'm sorry.
No worries.
We'll have an additional CUP that was at Plan Commission last time. We've received the necessary documents we were waiting for, so there will be a CUP for Jefferson Street for some, a new storage facility development.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, everybody, and with that, we are adjourned.